Testing, testing. Good evening, everyone. Sorry for being late. If anybody needs to blame anyone, please feel free to blame council member speak. So remember, and that goes for all of next year, too, or the rest of this year. We're going to start off with an invocation by Pastor Shannon Scott from Grace Baptist Church. He's a regular here, and our meetings go better when he prays.
Let's pray together. Father, we thank you tonight for the opportunity to gather together. We're mindful of the fact that we are at the Thanksgiving season. Lord, we want to be thankful for all the things, all the blessings that you give to us, our family, our friends, most of all, and mindful of our health and things of that nature. Lord, tonight, as we think about this particular season, we bring to your attention maybe some that are out of sight, out of mind tonight. We think about the little ones, the children. They're often most vulnerable. Lord, we pray for them during this season that you'd watch over them, guide and protect them. We think about the elderly. Lord, we're mindful especially of those that maybe have lost their husband, their wife, maybe most recently, or even at this time of the year. Lord, they think about that one that they were married to. Lord, be with them tonight. I pray that you should look after them during this season. We're mindful tonight, Lord, of those that are feeling maybe down and out or depressed tonight. Maybe they're contemplating doing some harm to themselves. Lord, we pray that you would help them to get to us and us to get to them. If we know someone that's struggling tonight, Lord, help us to be an extra care. Lord, as we come into this, we're mindful tonight of those that are first responders and do work throughout our city, as well as all these that have business here tonight. Lord, help, help give them wisdom, give them discernment in everything that's said and done. May we all be people that are thankful. And as we meet together tonight, we thank you for your help. We love you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Okay, is Dustin, please stand still. Is Dustin here? Dustin Hamlin? Dustin, my dude. Dustin, come lead us in the pledge.
Okay.
You're a little too tall.
Everybody put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Oh, Dustin, can we? Can all, can the council, the whole council come down and we'll take a picture with Dustin? Dustin, you gotta stand up here, dude. You're, we'd be taking a picture at the podium if you stand back there. Here, hold the mic for the, like you got a rapping career. Dustin.
Good job, bud. Good job, buddy. Good to see you.
Good to see you. I think we're about the same height.
Till next year.
Okay, Caleb, get out of the way. No, 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 bombs are more important. There you go. Dustin, Dustin Hamlin, everybody. I don't know a better way to start a council meeting, to be honest with you. At this point, we want to open up, convene open session. Want to recognize former Mayor Dick Haley in the council chambers tonight, so let's clap for him. You don't have to stand up, or stand up. Okay, here's the boring stuff. Individuals wishing to address the city council are requested to speak out a speaker card. They're back there, they're up here, and hand them over to the wonderful city clerk. There has been a revision to the agenda, item 10.3. The title was updated. I know some of you were worried about that. And we're going to move into proclamations. First up is Grieving Children Month. And we would like to invite Victoria Stevens with the Stevens Center to the podium. Victoria, I gotta get the proclamation. So this is Children's Grieving Month. This is from the city. Bunch of legal language in there. Basically says you get free food at McDonald's and stuff like that. But I'd like to give you the microphone and maybe you can explain to us what, what the grieving children month is.
Sure, thank you. So on behalf of the 5,000 children in the city of Corona and Corona York Unified School District and the 70,000 children in Riverside County who will have a parent or caregiver die before that child graduates from high school, we thank you and the city council for taking the time to recognize National Children's Grief Month, which is the month of November, and the work that the Stevens Center board and team do here in Riverside County and the Inland Empire to ensure that all children have support in their grief and that no child grieves alone.
Can we clap for that? And then this is for you. And if we could take a picture up front here. I'm excited for this. Bob, are you here? All right, Bob, come on up. So if you don't know Bob, he is a, he's a gentle giant, but he's also the auto shop teacher at Corona High School, so he's never said the F-word. And...
Is that Ford? Is that what you're trying to say? Ford? That's it? Okay, just making sure. Keeping it PG here, Tom.
So we want to present Bob with the Rivers 2020, is it 25 or 24? 25. Wow, you've already went up for the last, next year. Receiving the 2025 Riverside County Teacher of the Year Award. So I'm going to hand you this. And there's, I'm going to take a little time, if you don't mind, Bob. I went to, Vice Mayor Steiner and I went to the Mason thing last year. And there, there was a girl who, her and her mom were homeless, living in a car, right? And so, and their car broke. And Bob doesn't know this, but I was watching him, and I was watching this mom and daughter combo. And as soon as that meeting ended, Bob couldn't get to that mom and daughter fast enough. And he did it without people knowing. He did it because he wanted to help them out. And it's just the caliber of person that he is. And I saw it, I watched it, and I know you helped him out because I talked to him. So I want to say thank you for that. And then, Bob, I hope you don't mind, but can I announce it? There's a fuel truck up at Heritage Room, up at the Heritage Museum. It was built in the 1940s. It's in disrepair. We're going to haul it to Corona High School, and it served the citrus fields of Corona. The truck has never left Corona. And Bob and his kids are going to fix it up and turn it back over to the museum. And then, Bob, if you want to say anything?
Actually, hi, everyone. Thanks for coming out. I'm actually one of five teachers to be California State Teacher of the Year. So I won Riverside County, and now I've also won state as well. So I will be repping, representing California and Sacramento. I've been a member or a citizen of Corona since 1981. I've had several jobs within the community, and one of the things that I really teach my students is how to give back. We do a lot of projects for families that can't afford to have their car repaired. If any of you have your car repaired recently, you know it's very expensive. We work with the Parent Center here in town to work on people's cars that are homeless or have issues with them and they can't afford them. So that's one thing I want to teach my kids, how to give back. So not just how to fix old rusty trucks, but how to be good humans and how to give back to this amazing city. So it's, it's been amazing for me to be a Corona resident, and I'm proud to be recognized here tonight and for my amazing students that have, have grown my program to what it is today. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for my amazing students. So, thank you so much.
All right, Caleb, how do you want to shoot this? GQ magazine? Okay, Josh, are you presenting? Oh, you're going to present? Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Savat, and I'll hike back up. And Savat, will you, I'll announce it. Savat's going to give an update on... I lost my page. The McKinley Grade Separation and why it's on time and under budget and all that.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. As you all know, this is a huge project, and we've come a long way, but the end is in sight. As we get the presentation ready for you, I'm actually, I'm just introducing the speakers who are going to provide you an update. We have Alan Zhang, our senior project engineer with the city of Corona. We'll have Josh Cosper, our consultant project manager from Mark Thomas. And we'll also have Ashley Isaratoga, our economic development manager, who will be presenting. So as we get the video ready, I'll go ahead and bring them up to give you an update. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. We have a brief presentation tonight to provide an update on the McKinley Grade Separation project. My name is Alan Zhang. Joining me today is Ashley from our Economic Development Department and Josh Cosper from Mark Thomas. So we'll begin tonight's presentation with a snapshot of the project configuration. Next, we'll review the recent construction activities, including a highlight video of the bridge move, followed by a look ahead of upcoming construction activities. Our economic development team will then highlight the business support and outreach efforts. And finally, we will review our public outreach efforts thus far. So here is the southeastern rendering view of the bridge, as many of you have seen before. And I'm happy to show today, for the first time, an actual picture of the bridge in place. This view is looking northwest over the railroad. We also have a great video that the team put together that details the bridge move. That will be in the later part of this presentation. First, let's go over some of the recent construction activities. Apologize. There we go. So this project included the replacement of a portion of the Western Municipal Water District's F-1 line as a result of the extra loads and fill created by the project. This is a regional 12-inch line that collects wastewater with high volumes of salt from several wastewater treatment plants within the area. And the pictures are of a 40, 40-feet-deep siphon structure that was constructed as part of the project. Here are some pictures involved with the relocation of the city's 30-inch transmission water line. You can see the magnitude of the size of the pipe compared to the people that are standing next to it. One of the challenges is the need to weave through a spider web of utilities, as you can see the lines crossing above their heads. And we are currently working on the roadway and water quality basin improvements along Paseo Los Arcos, which is the official name for the Loop Road Connector from Sampson to McKinley. Earlier in the year, we constructed much of the 91 eastbound on and off-ramp work. This is a picture of the setup and grading work before we installed concrete pavement on top. And we are progressing very well with the construction of the retaining walls along the west side of McKinley Street. We finished the retaining walls north of Sampson, and that area is now waiting for final asphalt pavement. These are pictures of the wall construction south of the bridge and the lightweight cellular concrete activities. And here's a picture inside the Ewing parking lot with the panels and how the walls will look from the outside once constructed. You will see some of these pictures shortly in the video, but in the upper left, this was the temporary structure that was built to slide the bridge across the Arlington Channel. The lower, the lower right is a close-up of one of the two self-propelled modular transporters, or SPMTs, that were needed to move the bridge. Each SPMT had 32 axles. Here are some pictures throughout the night of the bridge move. Some of you were able to come out to see it up close and personal. So of the hundreds of pictures and joint footage we have, this picture here felt like the great one to cap off a tremendously successful bridge move. For the last couple of months, we have been working through constructing the bridge decking and finishing off the bridge improvements. These are great pictures of the decking and how the concrete is poured through the boom pump. And finally, here we have the bridge move video you have all been anticipating. After the video, I'll turn it over to Josh to talk about the upcoming construction activities and right-of-way status.
Two hours and 35 minutes. That's how long traffic is stopped cumulatively each day on McKinley Street to allow trains to pass. That time will increase to four hours and 20 minutes by 2035. To alleviate this burden on commuters, the city of Corona decided that the best solution would be to elevate McKinley Street over the railroad tracks and Arlington Channel by constructing a suspension bridge. The bridge will reduce hours of traffic congestion, reduce noise and air pollution, enhance emergency vehicle response times, and improve safety for motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians at the crossing.
One of the primary goals of this project was how to construct the bridge while keeping McKinley Street open. And so a traditional concrete bridge wouldn't have allowed that.
Because the city wanted to keep McKinley Street open during construction, they decided to fabricate the bridge off-site at a facility in Washington State. While the bridge was being fabricated in Washington, a process that took about 20 months, crews in Corona were preparing new roadway, pouring concrete, and relocating utilities, all while traffic continued to flow on McKinley Street. utilities, all while traffic continued to flow on McKinley Street. Fabricated sections of the bridge were shipped to Corona and assembled in a yard adjacent to its final destination. The last part of the bridge's journey requires sliding it across the channel and the tracks, and finally, maneuvering it into position between the bridge support columns. Guiding the bridge into its final position is a delicate engineering feat with little room for error.
Tonight's much anticipated bridge move will be exciting, and it will be a huge milestone in civic improvement to alleviate congestion and improve safety in this area.
During the early hours of August 25th, with the bridge already moved across the channel, we're going to witness this final maneuver, a process that will take about 10 hours to complete. The bridge will be moved on self-propelled modular transporters, or SPMTs. The SPMTs are remote-controlled and provide the incredible precision necessary to maneuver the bridge into its final position. Although uncommon in California, SPMTs have been used increasingly throughout the United States to move things like rockets, ships, and other massive industrial and commercial The McKinley Street Bridge stands at 58 feet tall with a length of 294 feet. It weighs 2.4 million pounds, and there are 36 cables per arch ranging from 10 to 55 Moving a structure of this size requires the orchestrated precision of hundreds of Everything must align perfectly, with only millimeters to spare. Just before daybreak, the bridge slides into place. As the crew celebrates a job well done, and the sun rises over Corona, the first train passes under the bridge. In the coming months, the bridge will be fixed to the roadway, and the new elevated McKinley Street will accept traffic, delivering a cleaner, safer, and more convenient Corona for residents and visitors.
For the record, I didn't actually want to follow that video with the boring stuff, but I will. I'll muscle through it. So let's talk a little bit about what's going to happen coming up and where we're at now. So we'll start with the traffic control. This is a video over the Magnolia intersection looking north. And so that area in yellow, that's where we have the Estel closure going on right now. That's where a lot of the roadway and retaining wall work and work within the Popeyes and Arco parking lot are starting to happen. So we're working through that currently, and that the traffic is along the far east, as you see, one lane each direction. One of the big kind of considerations and challenges we had to work through as you're doing this is that obviously we're trying to position ourselves to make sure traffic will get on the bridge in the next phase. And so you got to keep yourself having enough room with safety clearances and barriers and traffic. And so it really did push it up as far as we can, up to the easterly side of the road to make that happen. This is a picture of looking at the 91 eastbound on and off-ramp looking northwesterly. And similarly, we have the traffic pushed up where you have one lane southbound and two lanes northbound along the east side of the road. And then here's a picture of the slip ramp that was built earlier in the year. Right now, that's the, the eastbound off-ramp has a direct connector to Sampson going westerly on that. But when this is actually constructed, this will be the main portion of the southbound connector to Sampson through a future traffic signal next year. So what do we have left through construction? I just talked a little bit about the retaining wall and the work between Ewing and the Popeyes and Arco's property. We're cruising through that, making very good progress, getting that done. You heard Alan talk about the Paseo-Los Arcos Loop Road construction. Those two are really key to basically migrating to the next stage of construction. We're looking at having bridge, or roadway traffic on the bridge early next year, but we are really pushing the team hard to try to make it happen before the end of the year. So these are the two fundamental pieces, and so we need weather and some of the moratorium with the railroad and other to cooperate with us. But things are progressing very well right now. Into next year, this yellow area, you know, once we have traffic on the bridge, it's going to make life tremendously easier. We're no longer having stops at the railroad. We're not having nearly as much construction, construction conflict with the, the actual roadway traffic. We're going to be down in the east side of the area while traffic's up on the bridge. And so the area you see in yellow is what we're building through next year. You know, really where we're aiming for is somewhere between mid to end of next year to have the construction done, done, contractor mobilized, and we're pushing as hard as possible on that. So talking about right-of-way, since the last time we all spoke to you guys late last year, we've secured one more property. So we're down to two more property owner settlements totally to be completely negotiated out and settled with all owners. And then we had four businesses settle. And so we're down to one remaining business that has kind of opened discussions with the city right now. So things are progressing very well with the right-of-way front, too. So with that said, the boring stuff is over. I'll turn it over to Ashley and talk about the economic development.
So Economic Development has worked really hard to help the businesses in the area, especially as the construction has been going on, and making sure that we're able to offer specialized services. And so to date, we've connected with 88 businesses in the area. That's whether it's phone calls, in-person visits, emails, making sure we're following through and being able to support them. Of those businesses, 10 which actually asked to be included in some of our social media and newsletter, 10 who are completed with that. And we're very excited about those opportunities to be able to highlight them, encourage traffic to the area, and making sure that individuals are aware that these businesses are still open. We want to make sure we're embracing them, encouraging people to the area. And so we're really proud of those efforts and continue to do so. We let them know that even if we've spoken with them before, if they change their mind and would like to now be featured, that's an ongoing conversation that they can be featured in the future as well. So briefly, I want to share overall the kind of resources that we can offer through Economic Development. So that's the targeted business promotion, whether that's our bimonthly newsletter. We do something like a Business Shopping Center Spotlight. So especially for McKinley, we always make sure to add things such as traffic patterns or any kind of links they may need and project information. So again, they're looking at the best routes in order to be able to access these businesses. And then also our social media, specifically through Instagram. We also do workforce support. So whether that's through our Hire Local campaign, through our Live Work Corona website, or subsidized training, so getting dollars back to the businesses, them being aware of the different opportunities that are available to them. And we continue, again, if they ever have any needs, to reach out to us, have those one-on-one conversations. Let us know what your needs are, and then from there, we can proceed. So with that, I'd like to pass along back to Alan to do public outreach.
All right. Thank you, Ashley. So we have conducted numerous in-person and virtual public outreach meetings as shown on this slide. Our next public outreach meeting will be conducted tomorrow night here in the council chambers. As part of the project, we will continue to implement our text program. Currently, we have over 480 subscribers. So for those of you that are, that would like to join the program, just text McKinley to 844-518-1409 to say in the loop. We will also continue to send out public broadcasts and outreach notices through the city's social media on a bimonthly basis to update the construction look aheads and achievements. We will also continue to actively monitor the project hotline and project email and provide response. We'll also continue to update through the interactive web-based map showing anticipated traffic detours and lane closures, which is posted on the city's website. But you can also find us at McKinleyUpdates.com. And lastly, we will continue with routine aerial drone footage, time lapses, and other photography throughout the construction of the project to be shared with the public. So that concludes my presentation tonight. Thank you for your time. I will open to any questions.
Anybody have questions? Nope, we're, we're all dialed in, but thank you.
Thank you again. I just want to encourage folks to do that text McKinley to that number, 844-518-1409. Your communication is pretty consistent, and so that's a good thing for any closures or any lane modifications. So thanks for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public for proclamation, recognations, and presentations?
Mayor, yes, I have one speaker card for Agenda Item 5.3.
All right. Floor is yours, Joe.
Joe Morgan, 206th Street, Ren. A little bit on 5.2. Mr. Maggert's like a force of nature. You know, I aspire to be like him when I grow up, as a, as an auto instructor. So, you know, congratulations, sir. The first time I saw him was, you guys were at the Cinco de Mayo Parade pushing the project truck on Sixth Street. I was like, yeah, like...
...when the auto shop truck breaks down in the middle of the parade.
Yeah, exactly. But hey, you were there, and you were helping push it. So, you know, I was like, oh, I like this guy. So on the McKinley Grade Separation, just to keep it honest, there's really only one significant piece of property that got took, which is the whole front of the Los Arcos. That's the part that you haven't paid for. The rest of it is like, a couple feet here, can I walk in your parking lot for two years? Can we have access for utility easements? A whole bunch of TCEs, you know, the, the shopping center, you know, they're going to put a road down there, but you're not actually taking it so people could still use it to go in and out. You took the front of the plaza, and it's still not paid for. You seized all the property, and you still haven't paid for Los Arcos. So, so it's like, oh, we got, we got all of them but one. Well, there's only one. There's only one significant piece of project, of that project, that got took. A little sliver from the gas station and an entire front of the shopping center. That's probably, a part of it's going to have to be torn down because it's not even viable anymore because it doesn't have any parking. So, you know, this whole thing has been disrespectful from the beginning of the people that are down there. You can do all the coupons, it's just like the 99, or the 91 project, and you could say, well, you know, we're, we're doing flyers and we're, we're rooting them along. But you're building over the top of everybody without a plan to make it better when it's done. You know, it's going to be messed up down there. It already is. People are already paying a price for it. You can already see it, you know? And when it's done, it's not going to be any better. I, I think the housing bit and that, you know, the potential housing in the shopping center is probably the best thing coming out of this, because it kind of makes sense. Because nobody's going to, nobody's going to decide to just randomly turn left into that shopping center anymore. It's not going to happen. So, you know, it's, it's, it was just, it was rude, and it was a rude thing to do to that area on such short notice for, under false pretenses. I know you guys didn't do that, but you, at least should, it should at least be acknowledged that just the rudeness that was, that befell that area, it's not right. So, thank you very much.
With that, we're going to move on to Consent Calendar. All items listed on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine matters.
Mayor, sorry, we need to go to Meeting Minutes first.
Oh, look at that. Okay, Meeting Minutes. Approval 6.1, Approval of Minutes for the City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Corona. City Council Meeting of November 6, 2024. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Okay. Vote your conscience. And it's 5-0. And it's staying up for a little while. How about that? Okay. Sylvia, can we go to Consent Calendar now? All right. Consent Calendar. All items listed on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous City Council action. The items listed on the Consent Calendar may be enacted with one motion with the concurrence of the City Council. A council member or any person in attendance may request that an item be removed for further consideration. Would my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion? Tony?
All of them?
No, not all of them. All of them except, no, I'm just, 7.3, 7.7, and 7.10.
Wes?
I'm 7.3. I need to, if 7.5 is not pulled, I need to be noticed that I am staining on that because my company is working on that project or part of that project. 7.10, and 7.11, and 7.14.
You beat Tony. Jackie?
7.4, 7.8, and 7.10.
Jim?
I was 7.11 as well.
7.11. Okay, let me see if I got this. We're going to pull 7.3, 7.4. Sylvia's going to note that Wes abstains from 7.5. We're going to pull 7.7, 7.8, 7.10, and 7.11. Is that what you got, Sylvia?
I have 7.14, too.
And 7.14, my bad. Everybody cool?
Is there any left?
I don't know. So with that, oh, Sylvia, did the public pull any of them?
Mayor, I do not have any speaker cards for Consent Calendar, but I do need to note that item number 7.16 is a duplicate of 7.15.
So duly noted? Okay. With that, does...
Moved.
Okay. Anybody second? 5-0. Okay. Let's, let's start off with a Tony West special of 7.3, Construction Contract with Crosstown Electric. Jacob, do you want to?
I think, did we pull 7.1? Didn't Councilmember Steiner want 7.1?
I was 1-1.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, gotcha.
Okay, so...
I'm sorry, yeah, I would like a full report on 7.3.
Yeah, Mayor, we're happy to do that. Savat Khampu, our Public Works Director and team are prepared to present on that.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, City Manager. One of the city's strategic plan goals is to reduce the negative impacts of traffic by reducing congestion and optimizing traffic flow in the city. The Traffic Signal Optimization Project using artificial intelligence will achieve these goals by modernizing our traffic signal cameras to improve the responsiveness of our traffic lights. Following the City Council's prior direction on design concepts and its approval to use ARPA funding, staff is presenting before you tonight for consideration of an award of contract to begin the construction of this much anticipated project. We have Aaron Cox from our Department of Public Works Traffic Engineering Division, who has been working with our Chris McMasters in our IT department. I don't think he's here tonight, but, but Aaron will be here to answer any questions you may have. And that pretty much concludes my presentation. If you have any other specific questions, thank you.
Yeah, so my, so I guess my first question is, is we understood that there was a limit on ARPA funds? And then you're asking for an additional $1.5 million from the general fund? And I'm trying to understand how we overdesigned to require money from the general funds?
So let me answer that, since it's related to funding. So we were allocated about $6 million in ARPA funding.
Right.
And we had alternative bids and also additional equipment and opportunities to enhance our system with a little bit more. So the $1.5 million that is actually from the general fund is actually excess funding from our Auto Center Drive project that we had leftover funding. We just recently closed out the project about a year, a year ago. And so there's additional funding from another transportation project that we, we moved over here.
Okay, so is the, is... Well, let's just call it what it is. It's general fund money. It's not leftover from another project. We don't do that here. We have general fund Monday, money, right? So I understand that it was maybe, you know, earmarked from another project that, congratulations, we came in under budget on. But, you know, it's coming out of our general fund, and we've got a lot of projects that could be used, you know, that, that money could be used for. So is the additional money for... that the money could be used for. So, is the additional money something that is gonna be used right away in the, in the additional overage that you're asking for? I mean, or is there a way that we could scale the project back so that we don't have to go into general funds without it compromising the project?
We built the project in a way that we were able to scale it down. And I think that, given Council's direction tonight, we can look into that as well.
Well, so then, that's the part that we need to kind of understand, Mr. Kumpu, is, is if we were to pull out the $1.5 million that you're asking for, for the general fund, what does that do to the project? Is there any, is there any downside? Is there any viability issues? Is there any connection issues? Or, you know, anything along those lines? I want to make sure that if we're gonna, if we're gonna allocate an additional $1.5 million from the general fund, it's gonna be used for this project as built? Or is there, you know, does that catch up all infrastructure? Is that everything that is needed to go for this project to be complete? Or if we pull $1.5 million out, is it detrimental to the overall project?
We looked into that, and the $1.5 million is actually the optimal solution for the project. We all, it's actually, we've added the alternatives to make it the best traffic system possible. The $1.5 million would be the optimal solution in order to make the system work as a whole. The project in itself is actually just, is the major arterials. So, we are actually wanting to make sure that the $1.5 needs to have, to work to make the system work as a whole. But we, we had other opportunities to look at other funding sources, but this is the funding source that we, we could find.
So, I'm gonna jump into, Mayor. If, if Council wants us to look at scaling the project back to see what the impact of reducing that amount would be, we could certainly look into that. I think it'd be hard right now to tell you the exact impact of what exactly we would cut at this point in time. The $1.5 is necessary to build it out as conceived originally, which was to take care of all of our arterial intersections. But if you do, if, if Council's will is to limit it to ARPA funds, we could look into that. We probably need a little bit of time to come back and explain exactly what that would be.
Well, I guess, I guess the point that I'm trying to make is that, you know, Mr. Kumpu had said that the, the project was scalable. And so I want to make sure that all of this money is gonna be used right away. So, if, if they need the $1.5 to make the entire project work, and there's no additional work that needs to be done in order for the AI to work, right, is all the infrastructure built out that is needed to support, or for support in this, in this AI capacity, then great. Or are you guys gonna come back in a year and say, well, we've built the AI as far as it can go, and now we need to finish it by doing this infrastructure, that infrastructure, so on and so forth?
So, I think I can answer that, and I'll have Savak chime in if needed. Because we're talking about our major arterials, if the system worked particularly well and Council liked the outcomes from it, we could expand that to additional intersections that are on some non arterial roads that are still controlled traffic signals. This is to do all of the arterials as designed. It's scalable because you could decide that there are certain portions of the city that you don't want to introduce the AI component to those traffic signals. This is simply the number that we conceived in the beginning that's, that's programmed into it. So, you could reduce it by a certain number of traffic signals that wouldn't be included in an AI-controlled system.
Okay, I understand that, but I think what I'm driving at is, all of the signals that we've selected, the major arterials, they are, they have all the necessary infrastructure set up to utilize the AI.
With this project, they will. It'll have the high-definition cameras and then the software that will be overlaid into it and be able to control those using AI, yes.
Okay. And so then, there won't be a need to come back and say, we've, we've installed the AI, but now we need an additional camera or an additional light or something along those lines to make sure that it's working properly?
Not at this time, no. In the future, down the road, many years from now, you may need to do infrastructure upgrades as cameras age. But for the time being, this is the entire package needed to launch this, this arterial phase, yes.
Mike Solomon?
Should be on.
There you go.
I think I'm too tall. So, this, as, as the City Manager mentioned, this is for the major arterial corridors throughout the city. There's, there was a map included. Basically, there's two components of this AI functionality. There's the hardware and the central software aspect. And the hardware is, as mentioned, high-definition video cameras with radar sensing, advanced traffic controllers, there's some communication upgrades that go along with this. Now, included in each scalable aspect of this project, it was bid by corridor. So, we have a price per corridor. So, if, if the conversation of omitting a corridor were to happen, we, we have a price breakdown for that. Now, included in all of these corridors is all the intersections that would require the hardware, but not all of them are networked to our traffic management center yet to realize the central AI functionality. So, most of these intersections would be able to be centrally controlled by the algorithm in the cloud, but there are some that are not because they don't have the infrastructure yet. And the only infrastructure they are lacking is communications to our traffic management center.
And are those considered major arterials?
Some of those, yes. So, just for a number, like Green River Road, you know, most of Green River foothold is interconnected to our traffic management center, but there are some on the very west end of town that have not been interconnected yet. They are included in a project that is, is tailing this project, actually.
Okay, so there's a, so then, to dumb it down for myself, there's another project that is already in the works that's going to help complete this project?
That's correct. That project existed before this one. Internally, we call that project Phase 3. We're calling this AI project Phase 4. Because of the funding constraints on this to be encumbered by end of year, this project took priority and we focused all of our efforts on this. So, there was an existing project that was going to bring communications to most of these non-interconnected intersections. So, we're laying the groundwork for those to capitalize on the AI technology when they are connected.
Okay, so then, it's not gonna be complete until we finish the other project?
Which is already funded.
Which is already?
Funded.
It's already a capital improvement project?
It is a capital improvement project, and it's, I'd call it not.
Not funded?
No.
Okay. I'm just concerned that, you know, this is almost a gateway to, how much more is this gonna cost for us to have full utilization of this AI? And when, when this project, when 7.3 is complete, we will not have full utilization of AI until the other project is complete.
So, again, for the traffic signals that fall under this project, they will be fully integrated with AI. But there are signals as part of seven, or Phase 3, that would not be included already, and those would need to come later. And there is the potential that you would expand this even further if you like the result of that to other intersections. So, this does not provide complete coverage of all controlled intersections throughout the entire city. Just the number that have been conceived in the original design, this provides all of the funding for those intersections. But there are others, it's true.
Okay.
Yeah, these aren't all the streets in the city.
No, no, I wasn't saying all of the streets. I'm just saying this project as built isn't gonna be fully utilized till...
No, it will be.
Yeah, it will be.
Everywhere we've installed, everywhere we installed cameras, detection equipment, traffic controllers, the networking hardware and the system integration work, those will all be integrated, will all be using AI, all of those, those particular cameras.
Let me, let me clarify just a little bit further. In addition to those, there are some intersections on these corridors that are not interconnected yet, but they are getting the hardware upgrades to make them ready to capitalize on that. So, depending...
No, but they are.
No, that's, that's...
There's, let me further clarify, sorry. We're getting into the weeds here. There are two types...
That's what we do, Aaron.
It's perfect. This is the technical nature. I'm happy to answer all your questions. The camera systems have their own AI in them that have helped them better sense cars and are more responsive to, you know, the demands placed upon them. There is also the second component of AI, which is the central control system receiving pattern optimization solutions from a giant computer in the cloud and making continuous adjustments to those. So, there's two components. Everything on this project will have the hardware component. Most of the intersections on these corridors will have the software component as well.
Most, but not all. Okay.
Okay, I, I just have one, one question. That's for the City Manager. This, this amount that's been budgeted is in our budget, correct?
Yes, Aaron, this is, this has all been budgeted, I believe.
This has been budgeted.
Yes. These funds are on the budget. It doesn't require new funding that we haven't got in the budget.
So, we've, we've voted to approve that budget. I'm very happy to do so. My, my comment is, this is a game changer. We'll be one of the few cities to be doing this. And this is something that is number one complaint of folks that I talk to, and I'm guessing that folks up here, probably here, that how traffic signals work, how they're integrated in the system, Corona's always been ahead of the game. And this is just another step that we can get ahead to ensure that we are, are making sure that people are travis, traveling through the city in an effective, accurate way. So, I am, I'm 1,000% in favor of this. I totally understand the limitations. There are certain parts of the city that don't have connectivity because of either construction or timing. But this, this project is really important to me and really important to the folks that travel through the city. And I'm looking forward to it being operational. So, thank you for coming back. And, and thank you for getting this in front of us and, and stepping in front of the other project. I know we have a couple of other connection points that you're working with the County of Riverside to make sure that we have control over, you know, on the east side of town. And I'm happy to see this go forward, but I'm happy to, like I said, we've already approved this budget already in our, in our overall budget, so this isn't a change there. And I'm perfectly happy making the motion to approve this. Does my colleagues have any other questions?
Jackie?
I just want to jump in and say, Mr. Kumpu, that, those kind of wins, like the, the money that was saved from the other project, you know, maybe you did share it with us. If you did, I was unaware. But those are the kind of stuff that I think is also meaningful to lift up, you know? I think we don't, we, some, on, on the agenda, one of the items I'm gonna pull out is, you know, the efforts that we're continuously making to seek funds from other sources. You know, it's, the same should, the same kudos are due to you and the team when, you know, a penny saved is a penny earned, right? So, so thank you, and I want to lift that up.
Jim? Sylvia, are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
All right, Aaron, we'll try to get a taller microphone for you. And I, too, am excited about the AI traffic management. I've been bragging about it for three years, so I'm sure the motorcycle cops are thoroughly disappointed. With that, we have, I guess we're voting. There was none. And it approved. Okay. Up next is 7.4, approve the acceptance of additional transportation uniform mitigation fees administered by, administered by Western River, I can't speak tonight, by Western Riverside Council of Governments for the McKinley Street Grade Capital.
I just, Mayor, I just pulled this one again as acknowledgement. I know this isn't the first time this has come before us, but I want to highlight again that our, our neighboring cities are TUMF, you know, were grouped into, into TUMF, like, networks. And our neighboring cities all agreed and voted unanimously to allow for the city to secure these extra funds. And I just want to say thank you to our, our colleagues. This is, you know, Eastville, Norco, Hoopa Valley. Who else is in our TUMF group, Mr. Kumpu? I think that's it. And, and the County of Riverside, Western District, too. They didn't have to do that, and they did, and we're better for it. So, thank you to them, WR Cog, and RCTC.
Tony, you got anything? Wes? Jim? Jacob? Jingleheimer Smith? Sylvia, are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Joe, did you want to speak on this?
Yeah, it's, it's great. They pitched in $11 million. But in economics, they would call that, it's, there's an opportunity cost to that. So, you know, we got $11 million for that, but we're giving it up for something else, or something else could have got done for it. So, this, this thing is, well, nobody's ever really talking about the budget, right? So, it was supposed to be around $100 million. Notice, it's the thing that nobody really talks about here. I mean, we, I actually have put general, what, $10 million in general fund that was promised that was never gonna happen. There's been $10 million here, another $11 million here. I mean, it's, there's been a lot of extra money poured into this thing, and you're not done yet. So, it'd be, it'd be really interesting to have an actual presentation on what this thing is actually gonna cost. I'm not holding my breath, though. Thank you.
And just for clarity, TUMF funds are funds from developers that are, if not used, they're intended to be used for infrastructure projects. And, and it's not specifically for Corona. So, they could have gone, this money could have gone to other cities, but instead it came to us. So, that's a good thing.
Okay, vote your will. 5-0. Just for a note on 7.5, Wes abstained. So, mark that off. Up next is 7.7, purchase order to City Electric Supply for the purchase of 75 kilovolt AMP mount, AMP, AMP pad-mounted transformers. Wes? Tony? Tony, you pull this one?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, are, we're buying three of them. Are three of them gonna go into use? Or is one of them gonna go into use and two of them are gonna go into storage? Or how's that work?
Two are gonna go into use for replacement during our last preventive maintenance inspection. Two units were identified in the Prince Lynn property area that need to be replaced. And so, these are long lead items. One of them is going to be an additional for our warehouse storage.
Okay, it's not like, we don't, we're not gonna get lucky and you buy two and you get the third one free?
I tried. We, not happening.
All right, I just wanted to, I just wanted to see if one of them was gonna go into storage. What's the, what's the term of life on something like these?
Shelf life is a long time. They take about six months to a year before delivery. And then the life in the system is about 25 to 30 years. And generally speaking, that's ideal conditions, no rain, moisture, anything like that, that they're gonna sit in for long periods of time. Storage in the warehouse, we've had them in the warehouse for up to seven years, put them in service, no issues.
Is, is, are we gonna get all three at once or staggered?
We'll get all three at once. Two of them will immediately go into scheduling for replacement, and then one will go into the warehouse.
And then, on something like this, Mr. Moody, and please forgive me for my simple analogy here, but is this something that you gotta go out and start once a month to keep it, like, working properly? Or how, how does this work? I just, I just figure something like this is, is a big electrical thing that is just sitting there, and that concerns me.
No, actually, these are the type of equipment that love to be ran, these are run continuously 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, they're in service. Once we put them in service, they remain in service and operational, passing electricity from 12 KV down to 480 volts. And then we redistribute that out throughout wherever our service territory is. What these do not like is, these do not like to be turned on and turned off.
Gotcha.
Generally, when they're turned on and turned off in a power outage or something like that, or, or repeated power outages is where you will actually get short circuit failures.
Okay. And then, my last question is, is the one that's gonna sit in storage for backup, what happens if we go to install it and it doesn't work? Is this something that, like, is a warrantable type item where we could call the manufacturer and say, hey, this one's not working, but it was in storage for six years?
No. So, what happens is warranty, as with most electrical switchgear and that type of, of stuff, is a year after delivery. But generally, again, what we've experienced is we don't see these, we've put them in after seven years and we don't see them. Now, I will say, we, we are keeping this one in storage for emergency repairs. So, if we have one that fails immediately, we can immediately go to the warehouse and get it. Additionally, what we will do, as we do preventive maintenance annually on all of our electric systems throughout where our service territory, it's not anticipated to sit in the warehouse for long periods of time. If we notice one that's having a decline or something like that, we will order new ones. And then this will be the first one to go out in the field once that's done. So, it's a FIFO mentality, first in, first out.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Moody.
Wes, do you have anything?
No, just thank you for having the foresight to have a, have one in storage, just so I know that we've had other times where we had to wait for them to be delivered. So, thank you and was happy to see it was a Corona business that we're purchasing from. So, thank you.
Jackie? Jim? Tom, these are the no-humming transformers, right?
They sing a little tune, yeah.
Sylvia, are there any speaker cards on this one?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Okay, public comments is closed. Just, there you have it. 5-0. Okay, 7.8, resolution authorizing the submittal of application to the California State Water Resources Control Board for drinking water state revolving fund financial assistance for the PFAS removal project.
Yeah, that was me. I just wanted to pull this as a, as a kudos and a thank you. I know, Mr. Moody, this isn't, these funds aren't guaranteed. I know, Mr. Moody, this isn't, these funds aren't guaranteed, and this is just an application, but I don't think we talk about it enough, just all of the, like, growing regulations and increasing costs to treating of water, especially for PFAS. And so I just want to highlight again, especially to the public, since we have so many folks here, all of the efforts that are ongoing by the team to continue to find other sources of funding to assist with taking care of this work that is getting harder and harder to do every day. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jackie. Comments? Tony, Wes, Jim? Sylvia, any speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay. Public comments is closed. Jackie, you want to make the motion? I did. Guessing five zero on this one. Look at that. Okay, 7.10.
This was me also. Oh, no, this is Wes. Just joking.
Creation of a capital improvement project entitled Corona landfill, Corona Landfills, landfill solar farm. I think Wes and Tony pulled this one.
Yeah, I pulled it, too.
Yeah.
Go for it, Wes.
I, I just wanted to get a report. I was excited about hearing that we're going to use a facility to generate some revenue. I think my questions were really, are we, is the idea for us to, are we going to lease this to a provider? Are we going to own and operate ourselves? And then last is, I see that the, the funding for at least the RFP is going to be general fund, a general fund project. And I was just curious why it wouldn't, why we wouldn't have it be utility funded, because it's, where were the money, where were the revenue?
So if it's general funded, the revenue would go back towards general fund project? So with some things like larger investments, we have, say, with the new community center, other things, these could, these funds could help offset the electrical cost for those. But by using general funds as the revenue source, then the revenues generated from it would go back broadly to the source where it came from, which would be any city operations.
Okay. All right. Just was just curious about that.
Can we start with a little report out? Just for the general public?
Love to hear a little bit.
Hear a little bit more about the project before we dive into the questions.
That'd be great.
So, as you know, the city of Corona has partial ownership of the old Corona landfill. This is an unlined landfill. Corona owns 56 of the 80 acres, and the other is owned by Riverside County. As part of that, Riverside County does the maintenance of the gas system. So from the landfill, as that landfill is degrading, it creates that methane gas source. For a number of years, this facility was home to electric generation. It was a corporation, a private entity that ran large methane gas-driven engines that created electricity and provided that directly to the grid. So the site is ideally situated to be able to provide back energy into the Southern California Edison grid. Over the years, in 2004, we also created the Corona Utility Electric System, which is housed on that same site. It has infrastructure there, so the energy could be bought by the Corona Electric Utility from the city operating facility. And then we could utilize that to service our customers and decrease load off of Southern California Edison's grid. There are a number of options that this site will house. Based on initial layouts, the site has been identified as being able to handle between five and eight megawatts. Additional megawatts could be garnered if the grading of the facility was allowable. And from that, we've been able to retain the plans from Riverside County. And we will be providing those out with the RFP. So that number may go up a little bit, as high as 12 megawatts. What we're looking for is a self-generation bill credit type scenario where we would generate the energy, put that into Southern California Edison's grid, and then we would get credits at City Hall or other facilities that are served by Southern California Edison. That energy, the other alternative, is that that energy could go to the Corona Utility Electric System to offset ours, and we would just buy that at the price per megawatt set by the city.
Okay, so the RFP would be for somebody to do EPC engineering procurement, construction, and then we would operate?
At this point in time, there are a couple of operational methodologies. So it could be a leaseback. We might determine that the site is going to, is going to, it might be beneficial for us to have a lease option where we just lease the land, and a company will come in and operate, own, operate the facility, and take care of all of the maintenance, and we just get a nice lease payment from that property for that. The initial direction given was that we would typically prefer to own and operate. Now, own and operate does come with its own challenges, and we want to make sure that the consultant does look at an own operate scenario, and we have a clear picture of what that would be.
Excellent. Thank you.
The one thing that I didn't see on, on the staff report is, what is the location?
This is 1300 Magnolia, just across from the Lowe's Shopping Center and Downs.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moody, I was wondering, will we have the opportunity then to consider the option? Or will it be on, okay, to consider how it is that we process these? Okay.
Yep. And in terms of the final operating model, really what we're looking for is the greatest value proposition, which one makes the most sense that provides the greatest benefit, obviously weighing some of the costs with that as well. But that'll be a decision that we bring back to council.
Yeah. I thought this was a very, it's an innovative way, as my colleagues have said, to use that land that can't be used for anything else.
Tom, I only had one comment, and it was, I'm just worried about glare from the solar panels because the 15 freeway is right there. So I'm just hoping that it's taken very serious as the study goes forward. So Sylvia, are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Okay. With that, public comments are closed. Five zero. Up next, 7.11, approval of the first amended and restated Mercy House agreement and the County of Riverside ARPA and HIP, H-HIP grant agreements. Which one pulled that? Jim, you want to go first?
I was just hoping we could get a report from Ms. Roper of us.
Ms. Roper, the great Ms. Roper, the floor, the floor is yours.
It's a joy to see you. I have a friend with me, and I'll tell you why. So I am super excited, as I always am, regarding the proposed contract with Mercy House. I'd like to start by saying that when you had the vision for your homeless strategic plan, you approved an entire system of services from A to Z, all the way from homeless prevention and outreach and shelter and housing and services and everything in between. And when you have a high functioning system like that, you can see a lot of people move from the streets and onto permanent housing. And as your council knows, every quarter, we give you data that's connected to the strategic plan so that you can see how your system is functioning. This contract is an $8.2 million contract, and I just want to thank you for the flexibility that you've provided in the past where we've had sort of these interesting mid-year where we're infusing the contract with money, and that is because we're trying to leverage other resources from the county, the state, and federal governments. And so this contract has multiple funding sources that are in it. So that's the first thing that I want to say, and it really helps us to have a smooth functioning system. The other thing I wanted to say is, Mr. City Attorney, I wanted to thank you, sir, and Jamie. This is a complicated agreement, and, you know, as we built this, it's got many different funding sources. It's been a very complicated contract with a lot of different budget line items. And the City Attorney's Office spent a lot of time to help me to restructure this contract to make it easier to manage, and really to align some of the budget categories, to collapse them into bigger buckets. So that's the one thing that I wanted to mention to you. That was really a, a big help. The other thing, too, is this contract contains a lot of funding sources, and I have Tanya here from the county with us. You've met her before. She's the deputy director that is over all of the continuum of care funds. You are able to have this high functioning system because we have great partners. And I want to take us back a minute. You know, the county, if you think about the million dollar ARPA grant, the Vista Dorada project was like $20 million project. And this particular contract has $1 million of ARPA funding, where the county's coming in to reimburse you, the city council, for the $3 million that we invested in city funds and CDBG funds. Thank you, Cynthia. I think she's here. So we, we invested $3 million, and so the million is going to come back to reimburse us to then reinvest in your system. So that $1 million is being added to this contract. Then we also received a $400,000 housing homelessness incentive program grant, $400,000 that is also going to be added to this particular project. The county has been really wonderful. They like our concept. We're known across the region as a whatever it takes kind of city to address homelessness, and the county has really supported us. So the budget line items, where we have certain funding gaps, allows us to do whatever it takes to have that high functioning system. So besides our city general funds, this has state PLHA funds, and then the million dollar ARPA grant, the $400,000 H-IP grant. So, and I just want to thank you for the past flexibility. We're asking for that with this particular contract, because if we maximize the, the county grants, we might be able to then stretch the city Measure X funds to go a lot further. So we have this on track through June, but because of the county funds, we might be able to stretch the city general funds and carry them forward into another fiscal year. We'll see how the project goes. But we did have some hard deadlines because of the ARPA fund, so that's why we needed to get this before you. So I would like to just, for a moment, hand the microphone to the county, because I know Tanya wants to say a few words to you about the great partnership.
I truly do. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you again for the great privilege of, of being here. As Karen shared, I, I have the privilege of working alongside her in, working with the county to coordinate responses across our five supervisory districts. I truly, truly want you to know that the county is a proud supporter of all the work that you're doing in the city of Corona, and it's for that very reason that we are very much trying to replicate what you are doing here across all other cities in the county. What you're doing, and I know I've been here on, on this stage to say this before, is truly evidence-based. You guys have seen the results of your investments, and part of my, my job and our department's job is, is to make sure that we're continuing on this same plight to ensure that these resources and efforts are available countywide. What I also wanted to emphasize is that the level of investment that the city has made goes beyond our department, and as was referenced earlier, is being noted by all of our County Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Spiegel, who was very intentional about setting aside the resources that she had for her district to the city of Corona, because we recognize that the resources would be put to good use to expand shelter bed capacity for residents in, in the region, and again, recognizing that if we invested this resource here, it could truly serve as a model for all 28 cities across our region. So no, we stand behind you, we stand beside you, and the work you're doing is, is a model, not here locally, which I've overemphasized in the time that I've had, but truly across the state and the federal region. There is not a time where I have not met with state and federal partners, and they have not noted the work that is being done in the city of Corona. So know that we are with you, and I know that you guys have all heard personal stories of what these investments have meant to your very own residents. And with that, know that it's truly a treasure to work alongside Karen, Karen Roper, and I mean that from the bottom of, of my heart. I know the rest of our department and county departments from Behavioral Health and our Department of Public Social Services will stand behind me in saying she is a great champion. She's a subject matter expert, and by far the best homeless czar that I have been able to work with. Thank you.
And I would also like to, council members, you know, we're very fortunate. We have an amazing operator, Mercy House. Not every nonprofit can do it all. This is an A to Z system contract, and we have with us in the audience, we have Pastor Charles Chapman, we have Timothy Hewitt, and we have James Brooks that are here. And I just wanted to acknowledge them because they, they live by one of my favorite sayings, blessed are the flexible. They do whatever it takes to get the, the, the job done for the city. So council members, we're just super excited about all these funding resources to get the work done.
Thank you, Zar Roper. Anybody have comments? Questions? Concerns? Wes?
I just had a, just a quick question, and thank you all so much. And I, you know, I, I too hear all the time about the good things that we're doing. And Tanya, you've meant, you've mentioned to me myself, and I'm, I'm excited about it. I know that, you know, I asked a question of staff about, you know, how does the sources' revenue look coming for, you know, for following years? And we know that things are going to start getting tighter. You know, we've, we've had a, a firm commitment to ensure that, that we fund at this level, to ensure that we continue to make this an effort for ourselves. But I'm curious about, you know, as we go forward with funding, is the idea going to be, at least I hear, but I want to ask the experts, is, as funds get restricted or lessened, will they be focused at, at places like Corona that are, that are, that are putting, you know, such a big foot in to make sure that we can, we make a difference? Or is it going to be, you know, kind of spread around? And then I'm asking you, look in your crystal ball, but...
Well, you know, I can take off my city hat and put on my Chair of the Riverside County Continuum of Care hat, and Tanya, of course, is with me. When we look at how the, our system across the whole region is functioning, what we've tried to do is to build incentives for efficiency and incentivize cities to work together and also to, you know, to have a system that functions. So I think that there's, for the future funding sources, there, you know, there's opportunities for cities like Corona. We are going to be headed into probably some leaner years, but as far as where we stand, because of the city's investment in Measure X funds, it helps us to be more competitive, is the first thing that I want to say. Second thing is, is this contract is a good example. You know, we, we have our state PLHA funds, and normally we were getting about $1 million, but that money is tied, a year, that's tied to housing recording fees, and when the housing market fluctuates, we got a 50% reduction in this contract. But because of the investment from the county, we're not feeling the pain. So you have built a system that is flexible and scalable. So it is my duty to our city manager and to your council to present you with options as we move into the future. That's the thing about the budget and, and the way that the system is built. You know, if we run into having to make some decisions, we can present you with options, and we can present you with, you know, what those options mean if you have to take them. But you can count on us to do everything that we possibly can to be bringing home the bacon. How's that?
I have no doubt at all. I, you know, I know that there's, it's a strange time out there. You know, I think I have talked to people in other cities, and they're seeing an increase in homelessness. We're seeing, you know, new folks that we've never seen before, you know, putting a strain in our system and other people's systems. And, you know, frankly, I'm hoping that that push that is changing with that, that recent court case change and the direction that the governor has been giving, that, you know, there's, there's a place for people to go. And, and with the change with, with Prop 36, that's another, another step in the right direction, and I'm, I'm hoping that that turns into, you know, less folks on the street. And I know that that's what you all want. We went functional zero, and I'm happy to support this. And I know, like I said, I know you're, you're shaking every tree you can, and, and I appreciate it. And I want to say thank you also to the county for your continued support. Thank you.
And if I may, since you brought that up, you know, I would like to take a... And if I may, since you brought that up, you know, I would like to take a moment to recognize our city manager because he recently convened a number of different cities in the western region within this county and outside of this county to have conversations about communication protocols, good neighbor policies, and showcasing the model that we have. So I just want to take a moment to say, a lot of the work that I have the privilege of doing is, you know, he's an amazing leader and I just want to thank you, city manager, for the leadership that he provides, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I could jump in. I'm taking advantage of the captive audience and the fact that this is on the agenda. Again, I'm in full support of this agenda item and I really thank you, you know, Tanya from the county, our partners and our folks here, taking some time to come out and join us, fully in support and it speaks volumes to the plan. I want to just highlight, addressing homelessness is so difficult and complicated because we're talking about human beings. And think about how complicated your life is. Every person that's on the street has just as many issues, if not more so. And so we're trying to address homelessness with enforcement and compassion. And it means that we're dealing with, you know, in Spanish, es cada cabeza es su mundo, every head is their own world, every person is their own world. You're dealing with people, every single one is complicated. And it's wonderful, we highlight these stories of getting people off the streets. And simultaneously, we're hearing from our residents, what Councilmember Speak mentioned, this increased, we're seeing homelessness more and more in our communities. So there's an increase in frustration. What you have here is a city who's truly, truly data-driven, who's, has a, we have a great team, all the way from, again, enforcement to compassion, the full spectrum, the full spectrum of services, trying to address a very complicated issue. We're actually making progress, but the problem is growing faster than the solutions can. And so we're really asking residents to be compassionate, be patient, work with us, know that we're not sticking our head in the sand, right? But you also can't just ignore this and you can't just, you know, turn it on to someone else. And so we're having these larger conversations with our neighboring cities because unfortunately, not everyone is coming to the table doing this work in the same way. And so I just wanted to highlight that because this is such a complicated, multifaceted issue. And we have one shared, we have a shared goal, which is to get people housed. But there are so many diverging sense of opinions and whatnot along the way. But I fully, fully support our approach. Thank you for leaving it.
Councilmember Casillas, thank you for the leadership that you provided recently to convene all the cities in the region with Riverside County Cal Cities to have the same conversations that our city manager was having also with all those. Thank you for that.
Well, Karen, you and I talk all the time, so you know how appreciative I am of everything that you've done for us and for the community. Tanya, we couldn't do it without you two. So we appreciate it very much. And Mercy House, you're doing a great job. Keep it up. Thank you.
I love a good Zar. And me and Ms. Roper graduated from the same Ivy League college, so we're good. Let's go to public comments. I know Dawn pulled a card, Sylvia?
Yes, we have one speaker card for this agenda item.
Okay. Mr. Fuller, the floor is yours.
Hi, guys. Don Fuller, I'm a resident here in town. I just wanted to take this opportunity, none of you need to be reminded, maybe some folks in the audience don't know what an extraordinary treasure Karen Roper is to have in this town. Very few people fit the category of irreplaceable, but she's pretty doggone close to it. And I remember when the homeless issue in this town was a mess. I remember specifically when there was an individual who was using the homeless issue to pat his own pocket. That's, we've come a long way since then and we should all be really, really thankful for the participation and the council and just the assistance and everything we get from Karen Roper. I just wanted to give her a pat on the back, that's all. So it looked, and Mr. Steiner as well deserves a big chunk of that because he was working with her through all of that. So for Mr. Steiner, Ms. Roper, I just wanted to say thank you to all of them. That's all.
Thank you, Dawn. Okay, with that, we can vote on the, public comments closed. We can motion, second, and vote. We're almost done with this. Next, 7.14, approval of Corona Delray Apartments pass-through funding agreement. Was this Jackie?
Yeah, Wes.
Oh, Wes?
I just had one question, one question and one statement. One, just wanted to make sure, I know that there's two different properties, that one has a 55-year limitation, the other one has some in perpetuity. Want to make sure that in combining these, that that doesn't change, that number is still the same. Donna?
Yes. So part of the agreements that are being presented for the council's approval tonight is an amendment to the regulatory agreement for the property that has the 55-year affordability term. That is going to be amended to be in perpetuity to match the term of the other agreement. So both properties will now be in perpetuity.
Excellent. And then we just wanted to say a big thank you to Assemblymember Cervantes for championing the $8 million to help us get this done. So otherwise, it wouldn't have gotten done. And thank you, and staff, for detailing the ins and outs and dovetails to get to this point. So thank you, very happy to see that.
Thanks, Wes. Tony? Jackie? Jim? Sylvia, are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Okay, with that, public comment is closed. Move, second, vote. All right, five, zero. Up next is number eight, communications from the public. This portion of the agenda is intended for general public comment on items within the council's jurisdiction that are not listed elsewhere on the agenda. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on these items. Please observe a three-minute time limit for comments and once called upon to speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Ms. Edwards, do you have any cards?
Mayor, yes, we have four speaker cards for communication from the public.
Maddie, you want to kick us off?
Good evening, Mayor Richens, Vice Mayor Steiner, and council members. The first thing I want to bring up is the first RSO, Stabilization Ordinance. I want to apologize, I did a major faux pas sending out an email. I was extremely sick and as soon as you hit the button, you go, apologize for that. So that's what I wanted for that. The second thing is state of the city. I just wanted to commend Mayor Richens and Sean and his team. Outstanding job you all did. That was just amazing and fun and just really depicted the way that our city is. So thank you very much on that. The third thing I want to bring up is another RSO. This time it's Riverside Sheriff's Office. And we had our K-9, the youngest, I believe he's the youngest member of our K-9 officer team, Officer K-9 Duncan, under handler Detective Clary, participated in the 27th Annual Riverside Sheriff's Office K-9 Trials. And Duncan took first place Narcotics Building Search and he took fourth place for Narcotics Vehicle Search. So may I also give, I want to give them a little bit of credit. And, let's see, what else do we have? Oh, just, I want to point out the screen, again, we can't see any of it in the back, the timing, the votes, like we used to. So if you ever have a chance to change that, please do so. And then the last thing that I want to bring up is, recently, we had a presentation by Yedekane, who's a Holocaust survivor, and I read about it the next day, Mayor Richens. And I was a little disturbed, only because I would have loved to participate or at least attend that. Where I grew up in a very small rural town outside of New York City, my neighbors had the numbers tattooed. I take a lot of that personal and I don't know, the library said they knew nothing about it. So I just, in future, if something like that happens, if we can open it up to the community, I would have been very grateful. So I think that's, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maddie. Maddie, can I give you some free advice?
Uh-oh.
So it's the Temple Beth Shalom, if you go subscribe to their Facebook page, they do it every year, so then you'll see it for next year.
Perfect. I appreciate that because I definitely want to attend that if possible.
If all of you guys can do it, they'll be wonderfully amazed why a bunch of people just signed up for their Facebook page.
Well, now you got it on record, so thank you very much, Mayor Richens.
Thank you, Maddie. Up next, Kim, you're speaking. Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Sharice Leonard, resident of the city of Corona. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and esteemed city council members. I am Sharice Leonard, the proud treasurer of the Friends of the Corona Public Library. Let me begin with a bold statement. There's a Starbucks on every corner. I know there's three that I pass before I even get to City Hall. But guess what? There are more libraries in the United States than there are Starbucks. Take that pumpkin spice lattes. As of 2022, we had 17,454 public libraries, branches, and bookmobiles in the United States. Meanwhile, Starbucks only has 16,482. The numbers don't lie, my friends. Libraries for the win. And fun fact, more libraries call California home than any other state. What can I say? We love our books as much as we love our sunshine. Must be reading on the beach. Now here's the twist. While Starbucks makes a lot of money serving up caramel macchiato's, libraries spend their money serving communities. Big difference. Libraries provide critical resources, programming, and access that people rely on daily. And despite what you may hear, libraries aren't relics, they're resilient. Take this for example, even with the rise of eBooks and all things digital, the need for physical library books hasn't gone anywhere. In fact, the golden rule is that a library should have one physical book per person in the community it serves. For Corona, that's about 160,000 books. It's a whole lot of pages, folks. To help meet that goal, the Friends of the Corona Public Library recently donated $20,000 for new books, which translates to only about 1,500 books. Think of those books as little treasure chests waiting to spark curiosity and expand minds. And speaking of expanding minds, here's a stat for you. Last year, 233,178 children's books were circulated at the Corona Public Library. Yes, nearly a quarter of a million books. I mean, if kids are putting down their screens for books, we must be doing something right. My daughter won't give up her iPad for anything. There's this pesky misconception that public libraries are fading away. Let me assure you, they're not going anywhere. Libraries are like your favorite pair of jeans, always adapting but never out of style. Corona's library has embraced digital collections, added cutting-edge technology, and launched programs like career readiness workshops and computer classes. And let's not forget the audiobooks. You can now take a great story with you on your morning jog, or like I do, watching people do the jogging for me. But here's the thing, with every digital checkout or audiobook loan, the libraries need to support both the physical and digital spaces growth. That's why the Friends of the Library remain dedicated to ensuring our library has the resources it needs to thrive and we hope that you will echo our sentiments. So to sum it up, can I finish real quick? Libraries are the backbone of our community, outnumbering coffee shops, serving kids and adults alike, and constantly evolving. Thank you for your time and continued support of our library because while Starbucks may fuel our mornings, libraries continue to fuel our minds.
You rock, Sharice.
Thanks.
Yeah, Tony, libraries are cool.
Those two are done fighting, you guys can come on up.
Some Starbucks puns back and forth, so. Good evening, council. My name is Mina Arnold and this is Tamara Copeland. And we are both volunteers with the Trauma Intervention Program, our TIP program here in Corona. We work alongside our police department, our fire department, Corona Regional, and we are called to help support families, friends, and bystanders who have experienced some sort of traumatic event. It's not easy volunteer work that we do, but it is needed and it is really important. We feel honored to be able to serve in this role and support fellow Corona citizens as they endure what is most likely the most terrible day or night of their lives. We are on-call 24/7, 365 days a year. We average about close to 40 calls a month and we have less than a 20-minute response time anywhere in the city of Corona. So I just wanted to kind of put out a plea there. If you're looking for a way to give back and to serve our community, please consider the Trauma Intervention Program for those of you listening and those of you who are kind of looking at different opportunities. There is, we were provided thorough training. So there is a training class that's beginning January 23rd. And if you go to www.tipcorona.org and you scroll down to the very bottom, there's a link that says, click here to become a volunteer. It says, become a volunteer. And it'll give you information on how to reach out if you're interested in joining our next, our next class. Jim, I know you're really familiar with this, so I would gladly, I don't know if you want to, if you're able to speak to it a little bit, but I'll gladly give you the rest of my three minutes if you do. Thank you, everybody.
All right, well, thank you so much, ladies, for coming down tonight. And just, you know, bragging a little bit about TIP because you guys really are the unsung heroes in this community. And for those of you that aren't familiar with it, these are a group of volunteers that when the police or fire department get on scene, whether it's a structured fire, a full arrest, you know, death in the family, domestic violence, there's just so many different things. The police and firefighters have to eventually leave and usually sooner rather than later. And early on in my career, it was always kind of a gut punch when we had to leave because we felt like there wasn't this sense of closure. And when we were able to call our TIP volunteers, who have been trained to deal with this kind of stuff, to say the right words, to not say certain things, we felt so much better to be able to hand it off to you so we could respond to further emergencies. But we knew the family, the one grieving, was still in good hands. So thank you so much.
Okay, are there any other speaker cards, Sylvia? Joe?
Not sure I can really follow the TIP program. So I want to, one really bright spot from last weekend, like literal and metaphorical, was I got to participate in the Circle City Rideout. I've been trying to get a hold, trying to do that for the last couple of months. It was a lot of fun. Everybody met up in the parking lot out here and hopped on bikes. It was everything from little kids on little bikes to a bunch of people on e-bikes, to me on a BMX bike and Michelle on a mountain bike and rode up and around Grand, up Kellogg, down across Cottonwood, through the shopping center, down El Soprante. I don't even know how long it was. I do remember thinking, oh, these BMX seats are not that comfortable. But, but yeah, it was a lot of fun. And the next one, I believe, is December 14th. And I think they were talking about starting at Santana and then doing like a Christmas light, kind of a thing, like a Christmas light tour. We had to kind of remind them that Corona kind of goes uphill, so you don't want to start down here and then ride all the way up to the top. So we're going to try to start in the middle. So it's kind of broke up a little bit, so not everybody's in extremis trying to complete it. It was really fun because you drive through a neighborhood and people would come out of the houses and yelling. We went by Tom's, he didn't yell, but there was, it was, it was pretty fun. It was, you almost felt like a little, like a little bicycle amoeba thing, but so you're sort of bringing joy around to the city. It was kind of fun because you're just, you're just cruising along, riding a bike, and people would come out of the houses and they're clapping and people in cars are honking. And not like the usual kind of honking. They were honking because they were happy to see you. They were going the other way honking, you know? So it was, it was quite a lot of fun. So if you have a chance to do it, you know, you should definitely, definitely give it a shot.
Can I add on?
What was that?
Can I add on?
Yeah.
They, people had lights all over their bikes and it was really cool to watch and there was like over a hundred.
Wild. It's like a little electric light parade.
Couple of those dudes had some boom boxes going and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It had sort of a Mardi Gras kind of a vibe, a little bit.
Yeah. I do it every month. It was wonderful.
Yeah, well, I got, I told you I have another bike, so.
Cool.
All right, thanks. Thanks.
Okay. Sylvia, anybody?
Mayor, we do not have any more speaker cards.
Well, it doesn't get any better than that. Libraries are cool, bikes are fun, and the TIP program rocks. So moving along, public hearings. The, the next two public hearing items will be presented together. 9.1, public hearing for city council and Corona Utility Authority consideration of ordinance number 3405, modifying the budget-based water structure and establishing rates for potable water, reclaimed water, and sewage service fees and charges. I'm guessing that's why most of you are here. Does, I think every council member's going to want to hear the report. So we'll just move into Katie Hockett, Assistant Director of Utilities, will present the item. Thanks, Katie.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, mayor and council. This is the culmination of a several-month process that we've been working on. So the ask tonight is that council approve and implement the proposed water, reclaimed water, sewer, and greenfield electric rates. Just a quick reminder of where we've been. Again, we started this process with an RFP and an award in April. And then we've met just about once a month with you to talk through some of the options. We're here tonight. This is the public hearing for the rates. And then we'll have some next steps after this. Again, just a refresher of kind of some of the things that we talked about. These were the financial plan options that we discussed early in the summer. On the left-hand side, we have the lowest rate impact. And on the right-hand side, we have the highest rate impact. So the lowest rate impact would be if we had only funded our operations and maintenance with no capital investment. On the right-hand side would have been a full operations and maintenance and, sorry, fully funding our capital improvement program. The city council directed us to move ahead with option number two, which was to do our operations and maintenance expenses and then incremental capital improvements for our critical infrastructure needs. This also includes debt issuance, bonds in the second and third years, if needed, to, to complete some of those capital improvement projects. So again, we've, we've talked about this before, but just a reminder of really how we got here and, and why our costs have gone up so much. On the water side, our electricity costs have gone up by 33% since 2019. Those are costs from Southern California Edison. Our raw water costs, this is water we get from Metropolitan Water District that we treat at our treatment plants. That cost has gone up 27.4% since 2019, and it's predicted, projected to continue to go up for the next three years in double digits. Our chemicals for water have gone up by 48, almost 50%. A lot of that is COVID impacts and cost of, cost of living. Our construction materials, in addition to being very hard to get, the costs have gone up by 53%. And then our laboratory analysis has gone up by 29%. This is mostly because of increased laboratory requirements because of additional regulations. So some of the PFAS requirements require us to do quite a bit of sampling, and those samples are very expensive. On the sewer side, our chemicals have gone up by a significant amount. Our bleach has almost doubled. Biosolids hauling has gone up significantly. And then on the electric side, our, our energy purchase costs have gone up. Those costs have been, have fluctuated over the years, depending on the market, but the overall cost increase has been 19%. So these were the final rates for water that were presented to the city council and that were also distributed to the community. So we have fixed rates. That's the monthly cost, that's the fixed cost of providing the water. We call that the ready-to-serve charge. The cost is based on the size of the meter. And then we have the variable rates. So you'll recall that we talked about reducing the water budget from 55 gallons per person per day to 47. That's for the indoor water budget. This is a requirement from the state of California based on legislation and new regulations that effective January 1st. Californians are required to use 47 gallons per person per day indoors, required to use no more than 47 gallons per person per day. So this is our proposal to comply with that regulation is to reduce the indoor water budget. This is a net reduction of about one unit. Depending on the number of people that live in the home and the length of the billing cycle, it would be about one to two units. We are also proposing, you'll see on the variable rates, which is the bottom-left table, that tier five is proposed to be eliminated. We would only have those four tiers. On the reclaimed side, it's very similar. Again, the fixed cost of providing that service is based on the size of the meter. And then on the variable side, we have, we're proposing to have two tiers based on the cost of service for the first tier and the second tier. On the sewer side, those are currently charged based on the size of the meter or the type of the, of the account. We're proposing to have a fixed charge per month as a base charge. That would be what residents pay. And then all non-residential accounts would pay this base charge plus a per-unit charge for the water use. We're assuming that water in at the meter is sewage out to the treatment plant, to the sewage collection system. And so for all water used over eight units, it would be $5.50 per, per unit. We do not meter sewage. We would also have a variance program for those customers that where their water in does not equal their sewage out. Maybe they have a cooling tower or evaporation. We would have a variance program for that. On the res, on the greenfield side, there's multiple different rate structures for electric. I'm going to talk about the residential because this is by far the majority of our electric customers. You'll recall, we talked about that. Fixed charge per month is currently 88 cents a month. So hypothetically, if a customer was fully on solar and they had their own battery backup system and they were never pulling any electricity from Corona, they would currently be paying us 88 cents a month. But they would have the ability to use electricity from Corona. So we are proposing to increase that to $15.90, which is a more accurate reflection of the fixed, fixed cost of providing that service. Additionally, we are proposing a customer assistance program for, for electricity. And that customer assistance program would pay for the fixed charge. So if a customer met the income eligibility requirements, they would not pay that fixed charge per month. We are proposing to eliminate tier four. So we would have three tiers. And then we're proposing to, we currently charge the public benefits charge. It's just rolled into the rates, so customers don't see it. We're required by law to collect that. And we, that, that's restricted revenue that we can only use for things like the customer assistance program for energy efficiency projects. So we're pulling it out so that it's more transparent to customers about what they're paying for. Again, these are all multiple different customer types for electricity. So I'm just going to kind of skip through them. These are, these are minor customer counts. The, the bulk is in the residential. But on that last one, real quick. We are proposing to add an electric vehicle charging rate. We don't currently have that. So for like an electric vehicle charging station where the people are charging to have their, have people come and charge their vehicles, we would propose to have this rate for that. That's a new rate. So our next steps, if approved tonight, then this item would go for a second reading on December 4th. If it was approved at the December 4th meeting, then the rates would be implemented January 3rd. We would send out a bill insert or a reminder mid-January to mid-February because by the time that the rates would go into effect, customers wouldn't have seen those rates since they got those notices at the beginning of October. So we don't want that to become as a surprise when they get those bills in February, March. So we would send out a reminder. And then bills with the new rates would start arriving in mid-February to mid-March. And again, the ask tonight is that council approve and implement the proposed water, reclaimed water, sewer, and greenfield electric rates.
All right. Thank you, Katie. Let's, the people have been here a long time. Let's, let's kick, let's start off with public comments. I'm guessing a number of you have filled out blue cards. If you have, you're more than welcome to come up to the podium and speak. Joe, do you want to go first?
Why not? So this, just all the meeting, oh yeah, we did all these meetings and that meeting and this meeting, all of them during the day. None of them in this room at this time when a normal council meeting would be. All of them in afternoon meetings. Sometimes, you know, I think, I think it was first discussed at a morning meeting, you know, so council workshops. You know, they're basically council meetings where you decide things out of the public eye. I think in a lot of cases deliberately. I think these are done deliberately. They could have been done here, the discussion. If somebody would have come to all the meetings, I went to all the meetings, they would have seen exactly how thin the discussions were. It's the same game that happens every single time where you go, well, we've got a menu. One being completely disastrous to five being everything's going to be great. And, and then everybody kind of scooches towards two. Because you're like, we don't want to be disastrous, but we don't want to spend too much money. But there's never any real discussion about how any of these things come about. And, and you just take whatever, whatever the department says at face value. And I'm hearing all the numbers, they don't really seem to add up. And there seems, and, and what I see over and over again is the, the. And your allegiances are to the people that you work with regularly. And you take their word and their needs or their, 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 you know, they have the veracity and everybody outside doesn't. You're uncritical about what you hear. And you don't ask the hard questions, you know? I had a discussion with, with, with one of you guys about, you know, what the, what the job of a council is. Your job should be oversight and direction, you know? And, and repeatedly in this room, what I see is, it's a team. We're all a team. We're all pulling the same direction. No, your job is not to be the team member. Your job is not to throw rocks at everybody, you know? Your job is not to bash on everybody unnecessarily, but your job is to ask the hard questions. Your job is to be our representatives up here on the dais, holding these guys' feet to the fire in, in an honorable way, in a forthright way, in a well-prepared way. But what I don't see happening is you guys bringing anything to the table from the outside. Because it, it used to be, I used to see, God, in this room, I used to hear Councilmember Spiegel when she was here. She was the we thing. It was we. You know, it was always talking about, well, we did this and we did that. And she wasn't talking about us in Corona. She wasn't talking about us that she worked here. She'd be talking about RCTC. She'd be talking about the county. And I hear the we thing from you guys referring to the city, like we're the city. You're supposed to be our people up there, not the other, you know? We didn't elect you to be employees. We didn't elect you to be advocates or team members. We elected you to be oversight. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Thank you for having me. My name's Kevin Fritchy. I'm at 912 Mangrove Circle. I've been a resident of Corona since 1988. And I have to say, I absolutely love this city. I love what you guys have done, for the most part, for all these years. When I got the pamphlet in the mail about the water rate increase, I have to say I was, I was shocked. And again, I've lived here for many years, haven't seen anything like this before. But just to break it down, the pamphlet, it talked about the rates. It didn't talk about the percentage increases. So my understanding is the basic service fees, that they're going to increase 15% the first year and then 9% the remaining four years, which basically is a 62% increase over five years. The tier one rates is going to increase only 2% the first year and then 9% the remaining four years. So we have a 43% increase over five years. Now, tier two, this is really where it hits me in my home or my homes. I have three properties in Corona. 19% increase the first year and 9% the remaining four years. So we have a 69% increase over five years for tier two. Now, I looked at my last month's bill. This is just September, October. I spent about $189 in just the water usage. That's not sewer, $189. With the same usage, by 2029, that bill is going to be $309, $120 more than what I'm paying today, or a 63% increase. That's atrocious. Now, when I look back over the last several years, since 2020, City of Corona, the water utilities, they've had a standard five across, 5% across-the-board increase year over year, which is fine. That's for the service fee, tier one, tier two. I'm not talking about tier three or four because my properties don't typically get into tier three or tier four. So I do understand that there's infrastructure needs. I understand there's, we have to pay, costs will go up. But where is the accountability here? The rates that we pay right now, the city should be taking some of that and planning for the future. In my line of business, I manage almost a billion dollars of my clients' money. I'm a steward of their money. I would hope and expect that the city is a steward of taxpayers' money. So I hope that you reject this. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Bill Gagnon, 1176 River Road, Corona. I have a question and I would like an answer. Why call it a proposed rate increase? Why not just tell us you're increasing the rates? There's really nothing, is there anything anybody here can say to make you change the percentage or the size or the increase to the water rates? Is there anything we can say? No? So why call it a proposed rate increase? It's just a mandatory rate increase, like Joe said, that you guys are putting onto the taxpayer, the citizens of the Corona, that we have to pay. We have no say in the matter. You guys don't take anything we say into account. So why call it that? It's not, is it? I agree. I think you should re, I don't know how to do it. I'm not in city council. I just, I've been here as long as everybody else, it seems like. And you just continue to pay these fees. Why did you take the garbage out of the bill? So that when the rate increase goes up, we don't see it as bad? Is that why you did that? That's why I think you did that, because why else do it? Western Waste is now, it's going to lose my business. I'm going to cancel my waste service. So if Western Waste is listening, you can thank the Corona City Council for losing my money. I don't have to have trash. I got a way to take care of it. So I'm going to take that $30 that they were, you guys automatically took out that I really didn't pay attention to, and I'm going to take it away from them, and I'm going to have to put it towards the water. It's not a proposed rate increase. You should say it's a mandatory thing. You guys just suck it up. Citizens of Corona, you just take it and you pay it, and there's nothing you can do about it. Am I wrong? Nobody, I'm not wrong. Am I wrong? No, I'm not wrong. So what do you do? What is a citizen of Corona supposed to do besides move? Can't afford, I can't afford to live where I live. Only reason I can stay in my house if I had a long time.
I'd like to piggyback off a little bit of what Joe said. These meetings where you're talking about proposed rate increases should be held during the nighttime where most people can attend. Also, the other gentleman saying that the proposed rate increases are ridiculous, I absolutely agree with that. Now, I haven't lived in Corona since 2014. Yeah, the rates have gone up a little bit, but this rate going up exponentially is absolutely ridiculous. And as Councilmember Casillas did say, that a penny saved is a penny earned. With wages the way they are, they're not keeping up with inflation. And this hits everybody in the pocketbook. You guys, me, everybody here. I'm a mortgage broker, and I see people coming and out of the city every single day. I know people personally that refuse to move to the city because of the rates of the water and taxes in the city. I would humbly ask that you guys all vote no on this because most people can't afford it, or people looking to move into the city refuse to accept the rates. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Lenore Law. I went to one of the meetings that was on a Saturday. And no, it didn't really fit with my schedule, but I made it fit because I'm self-employed and my wages have not gone up. I'm in the hospitality business. Hyatt lost $22 billion that year. I bottomed out. The following year, I was sick three times. After that, I went through supply chain issues. So I was so busy with supply chain issues. And then 23, 2023, it was nothing but attitudes. 2024, it seems like we're back on track, finally. And I'm hoping that 2025 will be a lot better. I sat here and I listened to everything that you guys said. You are spending $7 million here, $8 million here, another $7 million here, never looking at that solar farm. That could generate money. Yet you want to charge the people, I think she said $1590 or something. My electricity, thank God, is with Southern California Edison. We're not part of that. My water bill, when I moved here, was $60 a month. I was billed $120 every two months. That's my house I live now, which has a bigger yard. It's like 18,000 square foot. I've done everything in terms of so our water can be less money if they have broken sprinklers or whatever, you know, we fix them. My bill is still over $200. It's more than my electricity bill. It's more than my gas bill. If we're going to have a solar farm and we're going to generate money, then why not generate money for the public? And then, what really got me is I work in an industry that handles commercial water. And is, one of the main thing is PFAS. PFAS has been around since 1930, 1940, 1950s. It's not something that just happened. And I loved your presentation about the bridge, but you also talked about the reclaimed water that you were using to build that bridge. That's costing our money and our taxpayers' money. And all that reused water is coming from underground in the bridge that has PFAS in it. And then you want to charge us 15% more in our water bills because you have more PFAS in your water. And yes, you're putting more infrastructure into the city. And thank God you're doing what you're doing with the homeless. I had a homeless brother, and he lived with me for a number of years. He's now doing okay on his own. He's been clean and sober for 25 years, thank God. So, you know, there's more than one time that I pulled him out of that park in Corona. So I know what it's like, and I know that we need I know. But we are, you're asking us for 15% more.
Thank
I can honestly tell you, I don't have it. And not only that, the email, that I had to email, I had to come up with two different emails to tell you that my answer was no. Because your email didn't work. I just don't think, I think this room would be full to overflow and have the people really been notified that they were supposed to be notified by I know.
Thank, thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Welcome.
1561 Cherokee Road. My biggest thing, besides, of course, I'm definitely against this rate increase, like everyone said, is that why this isn't a, it says if the majority of the owners submit a written protest, that it won't go through. Why isn't it the opposite in saying that the default would be against? Like, we should have the default being, we're all against, and if we all vote for it, then it'll be imposed instead of because there's a lot of people that don't know about it. There's a lot of people that haven't heard about it. There's a lot of people, they don't read this whole booklet. They just, I almost, I did throw it away. And I pulled it back out because one of my neighbors said, hey, did you know we have this thing? We need to write a protest against it. And I thought, well, why do we have to write a protest? Why can't we just have it defaulted to be not approved instead? And then if we wanted it, yeah, I'm sure we'd all go, okay, give us the information so we can go, yeah, yeah, okay, that's a good, that's a good reason. We need to okay this, or vote on it, even have a yes or no vote. But we need to have that, not just a default, oh, it's going to pass, obviously. Because there's not no majority of the Corona people that are going to see this even. Half of them don't even know about it. I had to text all my friends and the neighbors, and that's just a small area neighborhood. So that's my biggest thing, is that it should be defaulted to the, against it. And then if you want it to be for it, then we'll vote that way. That's my, that's my, anyways, please vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Very much for receiving me then. My name is Oscar Romero, and I'd like to address myself once again to the mayor and also to the council chamber then, and also go ahead and express my objection then to this rate increase that's being proposed then for water rates and other services and things. And so it's unfortunate that maybe some of us should be following along with some of these proposals as they're being formulated. I should have been going ahead and maybe paying more attention. And it is, it does seem like a very, very high increase in costs for us. And what I'd like to go ahead and say is that this is going to be very much a burden that many of us will not be able to go ahead and afford very easily and things. What I worry about as well is that, in a sense, going on what one of the previous speakers said, is that we need to prioritize the needs of the residents here of the city of Corona then. I know that you're going ahead and you're thinking about future needs that we might have in infrastructure and things, and the AI system for, you know, for traffic signals and things. But these are basic necessities that we're going in, that we're talking about. And what I've seen is that, you know, monies from our public, you know, city budget are being distributed and approved very liberally right here then for these big projects. But these basic necessities that impact us so strongly then need to be addressed, and I think that maybe in a sense, they should have been prioritized, you know, more than the, you know, the way they're being, you know, the monies are being allocated now for these other kinds of rates and services. Now, these are basic necessities, of course, water and, you know, the sewage and things like this that we have. But the, but the rates seem just too excessively high for me to be able to go ahead and feel in any way comfortable. I know that part of these are costs that you are going and taking to account as well, that are coming from the, you know, the state and things, or from the water providers that we have. But in a sense, could you have gone ahead and maybe, I'd like to say, you know, kind of bargained in some way or something like this with the providers of these essential then materials and water resources that we have and things? And, you know, it seems like, in a sense, it was just fait accompli, you know, where they went ahead and, you know, they said, these are our rising costs, and there was no pushback from us to go ahead and say, can you justify those tremendous costs that have been, that are now being, you know, that we're going to have to go and pay then right here? So I'd like to say very forcefully, very strongly then, that this is going to go ahead and impact many of us very strongly. I do not have then the resources to be able to go ahead and pay such high costs. And I think my needs were not prioritized and the needs of other residents of the city of Corona. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Carla Berger, and I live in the city of Corona. And I have a child that has left California because it's sort of more difficult to afford things. And I have another son that lives in San Francisco that has been laid off and moved home looking for a job. So my costs are going up just like that. I run a business. I understand materials cost increase. I would like to maybe see that there's some accountability from the providers, like no raises or maybe some pay cuts, things they could do on their end to sacrifice a little bit of the cost as we are sacrificing, I guess. I mean, I know that things do cost more, but I'd like to see if there's a little way to cut into that. And I also don't agree with the base charge ready to serve. I have a property that is unlandscaped. I don't use 3/4 water, but yet I have that base charge. I'd like to see the base charges stay lower and the actual use for the water be charged more then. So you pay for more of what you get, you know, what you're using. I think there's a lot of people that need assistance, and there's a program there for that. And people get things at way cheap, maybe for free. I understand there's a need for that in places, but we kind of need to bring it a little bit back together. Maybe some less profits. Maybe there aren't any. I doubt that. But yeah, if I see them moving down and us moving up for what we actually use, I don't like to see the increase in the base cost ready to serve charges. Thank you.
Thank you. You did good for a first timer. Welcome.
I'm the city council. My name is Ray Mogul. I live on Rockwell Road here in Corona. And these water rates have me concerned. The, those of us that have swimming pools, the industry standard is every three to five years, you drain it completely and refill it after you completely cleaned the pool. And most pools are well over 5,000 gallons. That's a substantial charge. And with Social Security only going up 2.5% next year. And listening to the presentation on the water rates for that the sewer rate, sewer flow is not metered, it sounded like that includes sewer feeds. I'm on septic. I don't, you know, impact the sewer system here in Corona. So it's just, you know, big increase. And watching city parks watering in the middle of the afternoon, which is the worst time of the day to water, especially when people want to use the parks. My sprinklers are all on timers, and they go off at 5:00 in the morning, which is a better time to water, less waste. I see too many people in town that water in the middle of the afternoon, and the water's just pouring down the street. So I'm not happy with the proposed rate increases. Thank you.
Thank you. What was your name again? Well, let me throw this out there. I don't think anybody should be draining their pool every four to five years. I think you'll save money by not doing so. Are there any more speaker cards? All right, come on down. I always wanted to say that.
My name is Alan Foat. I live at 429 Winola Court over in District One, I believe. I'm okay to go?
Yeah, you're good.
Haven't heard any answers come back from the council tonight. So I'd like to know when the answers do come out. I thought that maybe my maths weren't mathing when I was figuring out the increase. 60-plus percent is extraordinary. What have we been doing with the ready to serve money that we're collecting every month from everybody in Corona? Why isn't that covering some of these costs that we're talking about? And we're going to increase that even more. Senior citizens, like we heard earlier, they're only getting 2% or 3% increase. Where are they going to take that extra charge from the city, you know, to pay you guys when they're only increasing a couple of percent each year? There's a giant gap there between what the seniors can afford and what you're asking. It's a giant ask. On the pool thing, switching your pool water out, I don't do it. My pool water is now about 15 years old because that's 15,000 gallons of water that is basically salty now because you still have to put the chemicals in. But if you're not taking them out by changing the water, you've got a saltwater pool. And there's, there isn't a solution other than draining it, or I guess you could buy a reverse osmosis system and install it on your pool. Not practical. Thank you to the city for the RV dump that's over there on the Harrison Street facility. I would ask that they do better maintenance on it to make it so that both stations work when you get there. It's okay to take money that we didn't spend on certain projects, like a million dollars here or there, and put it back into something like this increase that we're talking about. I can't imagine that traffic will actually improve. You know, I drive down Sixth, or yeah, Sixth Street on Sunday morning at 6:00 AM, and I hit a red light on the street at that time. I don't know So in the short time I have left, I'd like you to consider that this is just too much. It's too much. 5% a year, people can swallow that. 60% by 2029 is outrageous. You haven't made any arrangements for people who are on fixed income to be able to do this. Personally, I had to take out all of my turf, 100% of the turf gone at my own expense, and my water bill is still higher than it was before. You know? The maths aren't mathing for us. Thank you very much. Please turn down this proposition.
All right, thank you. Welcome.
I didn't really prepare to talk, but just a few things I'd like to share that I've been thinking about since listening to everybody else talk. This readiness to serve charge, I think it really should be called the privilege of being your customer charge. Because that's all it is, you know? If I use no water by, what is it, 2029, I'm not to be paying $60 a month, you know? Even if I don't use one drop of water, I don't remember the numbers, but I mean, it's just, it seems pretty ridiculous. And I think it seems ridiculous also because my entire life, I've been hearing, you know, we should conserve water. You know, this readiness to serve charge, you know, putting the, all the increases or most of the increases in that chart, that single charge, doesn't incentivize anybody to conserve water. And I don't know if conserving water would help any of these, you know, costs that you guys incur, but I think it would help, you know? It would help keep costs down if we could just conserve water. You know, the city used to do things like, you know, they would pay people to take out, you know, grass out of their, or take, you know, lawns out of their, out of their properties. I don't know if they still do that, but I haven't seen any, I haven't received any flyers encouraging people to do that recently. You know, if you go to other states, you know, like the southwest, like Arizona, people have rock lawns. We don't, you know, you don't see that a lot here, you know? It would be, I think it would be a good idea if the, you know, if the city would incentivize people to actually save water and, you know, use it wisely rather than just keep jacking up our rates for things like readiness to serve. It just doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me. That's really all I got to say.
Thank you. Are there any other speaker cards? Anybody want to speak? We covered the field. Okay. Sylvia, do you have any other speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any more speaker cards.
All right, I think you want it all. It's not easy to get up and speak, and I admire all of you for doing so. With that, public comments are closed. We'll bring it back to the dais. Start off with Councilmember DeDerry.
Mayor, sorry, I do need to provide an overview on the protest letters that we received.
Okay, hang on one second. Let me read the script for that, and that way we get it right.
Quick, do we want to have Mr. Moody answer any of the questions that were answered, or?
All right.
There were some questions. There was also some statements, but I didn't know if that was in
Tom, were you taking notes on the questions? like, you know, they would pay people to take out, you know, grass out of their, or take, you know, lawns out of their, out of their properties. I don't know if they still do that, but I haven't seen any, I haven't received any flyers encouraging people to do that recently. You know, if you go to other states, you know, like the south, southwest, like Arizona, people have rock lawns. We don't, you know, you don't see that a lot here, you know, it would be, I think it would be a good idea if the, you know, if the city would incentivize people to actually save water and, you know, use it wisely rather than just keep jacking up our rates for things like readiness to serve. It just doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me. Anyway, that's really all I got to say.
Thank you. Are there any other speaker cards? Anybody want to speak? We covered the field. Okay. Sylvia, do you have any other speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any more speaker cards.
All right. I think you won it all. It's not easy to get up and speak, and I admire all of you for doing so. With that, public comments are closed. We'll bring it back to the dais. Start off with Councilmember DeDerry.
Mayor, sorry, I do need to provide an overview on the protest letters that we received.
Okay, hang on one second. Let me read the script for that. That way we get it right.
Quick, did we want to have Mr. Moody answer any of the questions that were answered or?
All right.
There were some questions. There was also some statements, but I didn't know if that was in.
Tom, were you taking notes on the questions?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that.
Thank you.
The floor is yours, Tom.
Thanks. I appreciate that. I know it's always a difficult process when we're looking at those rates. And I think as Ms. Hockett shared in the presentation, that our rates are going up. And, and we see that in those five categories. And I think if you look at just the basic categories of what we were showing for our water and our sewer, that equaled up to 58 to 66% of our, our basic costs. And so obviously, when we're looking at those, those costs going up year over year, we have to project and plan for that. And those are just our operational costs that we're looking at that drive our business in a sense. We talked a little bit, there were some questions. There were a number of people that talked about the readiness to serve charge. And the readiness to serve charge really comes down to the amount of infrastructure that we have to have in place to be ready to serve every resident in Corona when they turn on their tap. That is water lines in the ground. That's transmission mains from the Colorado River Reservoir. That is our treatment plants. That's our operational staff. The majority, the majority of our costs are fixed costs to be ready to serve that water to the residents throughout the community. And, and that does make it a little bit tough. But what we were trying to do and what we try to do is try to balance that out between the actual commodity, which is the water, and what we do to make sure that that water is then available to every customer whenever they turn on their tap. As we're talking through that process, it's the same for the sewer, right? We have sewer lines, we have lift stations, we have treatment plants. And all of these things have to be up, running and ready to go whenever we are, whenever that water comes down the drain. So as that water is turned on from the faucet, it comes out. We have to have storage reservoirs. We have to have pipelines. We have pump stations to move the water through. All of those are just the basic infrastructure charges that are necessary to make sure that that is available. Why we don't put that on the commodity charge is because that really begins to be an unfair number, if you will, that then can be challenged through the rate process. So it's important then to understand that if you have, if you use one unit of water and you pay $6 for that unit of water and everybody's paying $6 for that unit of water, well, if somebody's paying, if they have 15 units of water and they're paying that same charge, but everybody's got a really, really low ready to serve charge, that does, that's not equitable. The, because the majority, again, the majority of our costs are fixed costs. And so we're always trying to balance out those two to make the commodity charge as low as possible. And we try to focus our rates on being the lowest possible while providing the highest quality service. And that's important. One of the questions that was brought up was the Prop 218 process. Why is this not voted on? And this was voted on, right? So from the Prop 218 measure was voted on in California, and this is the law and the requirement. It takes a majority of opposition, and that's why we follow the Prop 218 process. We present a third-party independent rate study that evaluates our overall rates from our, our revenues and our expenditures and looks at our capital improvement. We provide that to the council and we then use that money to reinvest into the system. It's important then to understand that, that is the process under Prop 218 is that we, it was voted on by the, by the communities and every, every person in California has followed that since Prop 218 was enacted. And, and, and to this point, we don't have to send out a ballot every time that we follow this. This is Prop 218 and it's what's in the California Legislature. It's the process that we follow. Prop 218 does not get voted on every cycle. It was voted on at one time and acted, and that is the, that is the law that we follow now. So one of the, one of the residents talked about the, the challenge of being on social security and not having enough money for this. We do have a variance program. So we do allow for a lifeline program. So residents that meet the qualifications have lifeline capability. And we are able to provide that assistance to them with the proper documentation. A couple of gentlemen talked about pools. Good pool maintenance does request that you, you know, or suggests that you change out your pool water. A lot of times over time, due to soaps and other things that get on our bathing suits and our clothes, you will get large amounts of phosphate in your pool water. So it is recommended to periodically drain and change out some of your pool water from time to time. Now, we understand that and we provide a variance for that. As people are going through that process, we're not going to charge them at the higher tiers. We are going to provide them a variance. We ask that they make us aware of it. Is there a charge for the water? Yes, we do charge for the water that goes through the meter. But we do that at the lower tiers because we understand that that is not normal. It is something that they're doing for maintenance. And additionally, if somebody comes and has a broken sprinkler, a slab leak, any of these types of things, we have a variance program that we will work with customers on and then provide them that. Now, we, again, we always charge for the water that goes through the meter. We just do it at the appropriate tier and not the higher tiers. Because we realize that conservation is one methodology. Everybody, we believe, is going to be in tier one and tier two. Tiers three and tier four are excessive tiers. And so that's, that's where we're charging for that. In regards to lifeline, variance, RV dump maintenance, I will take a look at the RV dump station and make sure that both of those facilities are operating. I, I believe that's the meetings that, I believe those are the questions.
I think I had just, just a couple more that I wrote down. One is somebody mentioned that taking a profit. So if you could address that. And then second, the, the increase in state regulation. I think that we've talked about that privately or in other meetings that, about the increase in state regulation in relation to the, you know, we all want clean water, that the state is additional regulations put on top of us and what that really costs.
Sure. So we are not a for-profit company. We, the money that we get goes back into our, our product and our processes, right? So people, product and process. Obviously, we have state certified operators on both the water and the wastewater system. Our infrastructure crews are, these are the guys that are, they, we, we refer to them as our below-ground construction crews. They are the ones dealing with the pipes and the sewer lines. And we have our above-ground team that deals with all the maintenance plant and the main treatment options. They're certified by the state of California, either for an operator license or a distribution license, if they're working on water systems. And so obviously, we have, we have a responsibility to have certified staff to be able to perform the duties to maintain a clean and healthy water system and ensure that our wastewater district, or our wastewater treatment process is being discharged appropriately to the environment. So we discharge our water to the San Ana River and/or to our percolation ponds that are here in town. In regards to, in regards to regulation, California is one of the, next to New York, is one of the most highly regulated agencies or states that there is. If you look at PFOS, for example, I think Ms. Law had mentioned that PFOS has been around since the 1930s and, and it has, and we've had it. I, I fully believe my parents probably sprayed me down with Scotchgard at some point in my, in my childhood to keep me from staining the couch. But realistically, right, Scotchgard and other products that had PFOS in it have been in our environment for a long time. That is water repellent. So when a, when a constituent like that gets in the water, it's very, very difficult to remove. And it is pervasive throughout the environment. California, when we started this process in 2013, 2014, when we were doing the UCMR three recording requirements, we, we had regulations at 70 parts per billion. We are down at, we are down at point four. So we went from 70 to point four. And, and from a regulatory standpoint, we have to manage, monitor, test and retest our water to ensure that we're in compliance all day long prior to delivery to our customers. If you expand that to the list of constituents that are in the UCMRs and the list of constituents, you, you talk about microplastics, you talk about TCP 123, you talk about 14 dioxin. Any of these things that we have that are in our water supply, that have been in our communities for a long, long time, that is what we are up against in California. You add on to that that we have air regulations from CARB, AQMD. We have one of the toughest regions for air quality. That means that we have to have tier four generators. We have lots of different components. Regulations are probably one of our most significant hurdles. I know when the utility department was transferred to me, the departing general manager said regulatory is probably going to be one of your toughest challenges in the next 15 years. And that's held true. Those are just some of the things that we face for sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, real quick, maybe Jacob, this might be for you, but can you touch on not being able to co-mingle the general fund money with utility money? A couple of speakers talked about if we saved a million dollars on this, on this streetlight project, why don't we just put it towards utilities?
Yeah, Tom can address this one.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Steiner, that's a great question. The utilities are, are funded individually by the ratepayers. We, we cannot co-mingle. We don't get property tax. We do not get taxes from the city. We do not get sales tax revenue. These are 100% rate-based to the point where we do not even co-mingle water and sewer, electric or recycled water funds. They are individual. We run these as individual business units and we manage those funds individually. So sewer funds that are collected from the rates come in, they are accounted for. Salaries are paid specifically from that fund to individuals that work within those fields for the sewer department. And we will look at any CIPs that are funded specifically from those direct funds. So we don't co-mingle with the general fund. We don't get property tax, sales tax revenue, and we do not co-mingle between the funds themselves.
Mr. Moody, that's because legally we cannot.
Legally, we cannot. Correct. Now, for example, a position like mine, I oversee all four of the utility departments. My salary is made up specifically of all four of those funds. So a portion of my fund, every year, we look back and we evaluate certain positions within our department that provide support to all four utilities that we manage. And we appropriate the amount of funding specifically for those positions. So I get paid from all four funds in a sense, but we have to evaluate what that percentage is during the budgeting cycle process.
And then I just had one more question. I don't think I saw it in Katie's presentation that MWD raised our fees 37% for just years 26 and 27.
That is correct. Yeah. It, it was, raw water has gone up. She showed the slide initially showing that raw water had gone up from 2019 and then made the statement that our water would be going up from Metropolitan in double digits over the next two years.
And what that means is we don't produce our, we are in, the water we serve, we have to purchase to then give part of it. Part of the water that we, that we pass on, we purchase.
That is correct. So Metropolitan Water District is the water purveyor over a large portion of the state. And there's a number of water purveyors in the state, but they are the one that primarily serves Southern California in this general area. And Metropolitan Water District imports water from the Bay Delta area. That's the state water project. And they also import water from the Colorado River. We buy Metropolitan Water District, let me back up. Metropolitan Water District also takes water and, like us, treats that water at a number of treatment plants throughout the inland empire, Southern California area. The, the treatment plant closest to us is the Henry J Mills Plant. That's up off of Alessandra Boulevard in Riverside. Now, we purchase throughout the year, and we provide this in our budget every year, we purchase imported water from Metropolitan. That water comes in treated. That's the water that we get from the Henry J Mills Plant. That's treated water by their team, ready to be delivered specifically to our customers. We also import what we call raw water. This is water that we either get from the state water project, or it's water that we get from the Colorado River through the Lake Matthews System. That comes into our treatment plant. This is Lester Treatment Plant and the Sierra del Oro Treatment Plants. Those are surface water treatment plants. And we then treat that water to the state specifications and then deliver that. So we have imported treated water and imported raw water, both coming from Metropolitan Water District.
And Mr. Moody, I, recently, we met with our state legislators and we showed them, we're constantly advocating to find different sources of revenue to help offset and to really, again, it's, we're aggressively going for grants and other dollars. And we were asking, and I want to highlight the fact that when we're talking about water infrastructure, these aren't $100,000 projects. These aren't $1 million projects. We are, for instance, advocating for a reclamation facility. These are in the $35 million range. So there was, there were comments by folks about what has money been used for? Can you talk about what has money been used for in the recent, in our recent past?
Sure. Just over the last two years, we've replaced a number of pipelines. We replaced the Liberty Avenue Water Line, which is up off of Outnel Cerito. We've replaced water lines off of Carmelita Avenue. These are old AC lines that were put in 1950s era, 50, 60 era. They've met their useful life and we're beginning to have multiple breaks. We've also replaced a significant number of water lines in the Sierra del Oro area and up in, off of Fullerton Avenue. There's a few water lines that we've been replacing. So our infrastructure money, the money that we get initially goes to operations and maintenance. We take care of those bills first. We need to operate and maintain the water so that we can treat it. Other additional funding, any excess revenue that we get that is above and beyond our operational and maintenance costs will then be diverted over to capital improvement projects. And we bring those capital improvement projects every year to City Council. And we will have those on the books. Now, one of the things with capital improvement projects is we have to have that money. It has to be fully funded and ready to go. We don't, we don't get to partially fund a water line. When we fund the CIP, we fund it in its entirety. Now, through that process, then we will go through and engineer, design, develop and rebuild those types of things. We do process improvements at our water and wastewater treatment plants throughout the year, changing out chemical tanks. We will change out filter media. We will enhance analyzers and change out those types of things so that we stay up on our analytics. There's lots of efforts. Well rehabilitation is one of the things that we do with our CIPs. We've rehabilitated four wells over the last few years that have helped increase our groundwater production. And groundwater offsets our purchased water costs. So that's an important process for us to continually maintain our groundwater.
And can you also speak a little bit about the difference between a city that has their own water department and a city that, for instance, contracts with a special district? Where do the, where does the money, like how, because residents are paying for these services. But a special water district, folks pay for it in a different way and maybe they don't recognize. they don't recognize that difference? Can you speak about those two, two different things?
Yeah, and great question, and I think this is a little bit that we were talking about, that Jim was talking about, is financing and, and co-mingling our funds. And I mentioned that we do not get property tax. Special districts, Western Municipal Water District and other water districts, they actually get a portion of the property tax, and that's not something that we get. All of the money that we receive for the operations, maintenance, and reinvestment into our infrastructure is done through the rate process.
And then there was a question about the Waste Management Bill and the Water Bill. Can you talk a little bit about that separation?
Sure. We've had the Waste Management Contract for a number of years, and we have been, the Water Utility Department, because we have contact with the residents, we have between 44 and 45,000 accounts, we have contact with the residents every month, and it was decided a number of years ago that we would just do the billing for single-family residential properties for waste management. As that, as we were working through that, Waste Management would then pay and subsidize our customer care call center, because we were working with those residents anyway. We just renegotiated due to SB 1383, which is organics recycling, we just reopened and renegotiated our Waste Management Contract. And as part of that, Waste Management requested to take the billing back. They did no longer, they no longer wanted to have the utility department proceed and perform that task for them, they wanted to bring that back in-house, and that was a decision they made. We had a number of discussions about that, and the challenges, pros and cons that that would offer. And because of that, we then, and through the negotiation process, that was returned to Waste Management. You don't see it on the Water Bill, because Waste Management now sends out their own bills, and that's the purpose of that.
Yeah, and that was their decision. And I just, one, one final question. Can you speak a little bit about the, the study conducted, the length of time to reach the, I think it was PowerPoint slide, where is it? I think it was like the first or second, where there was financial plan options. There were five options from lowest rate impact to highest rate impact, and these were all scenarios provided with the study. There was a lot of discussion from your council, a lot of pushback, and this was all, but can you talk about the study and, and its recommendations?
Yeah. It's important to understand that, you know, we, I feel we engaged the council early on in this process and, and got your input and feedback, and really what the priorities were. And that really helped set the stage, I think, because you do bring the voice of the community, and, and I think that you initially and throughout this process have pushed back on us quite a bit to, to best understand the rate scenario. And if you look at that, you know, again, we, we talked about only bringing in and doing a rate that covered the O and M charges. And that's important to understand, right? We, we had rate issues that needed to be addressed, that were going to cover the operations and maintenance costs. We then talked about, if, if we're just covering the operations and maintenance costs, revenue in equals, equals expenses out. And, and what does that look like for us? And we talked a little bit about that process, and then we talked a lot about the capital improvement that wouldn't get done. Water lines that are aging in our infrastructure. And, and those are important things. And so we then looked at four other scenarios, and the, the highest of those scenarios is a fully funded capital improvement program. And I know Tony DiDario, Councilmember DiDario, brought this up a number of times, and he just said, you know, I think, from my standpoint, it's important to fully fund these things. And, and then he would come back, and, and then he would say, but what is that going to cost my residents? And, and I think each of you have said that throughout this process, and I think it's important then to understand that in finding the appropriate amount of investment that was the least impactful for the community was the objective of the council, and that is where we settled then on RDN option two.
And, Mr. Moody, wasn't the original recommendation by the study option three, in fact?
It was. It was option three. And, and the reason for that, and we talked through that, and the reason for that is that if we did not issue the debt, we then have to plan for those expenses. And we took the option of, we can look at the debt over time, and, and if we need it, if, if everything aligns and we get everything done that we intend to, and we can then pull that money through other resources bonding that we can manage. And we wouldn't have to increase the rate so much at this time.
Right. I think it was Mr. Councilmember Steiner who was like, what else can we push? What else can we defer just slightly? What else can we, you know, refurbish X, Y, and Z? How can we stretch this out a little further? Thank you for answering those questions.
Thank you.
I have comments later, but those are all for my questions.
Go ahead, Tony.
Mr. Moody, I have a couple of questions that I wanted to just get some clarification on. How many miles of water infrastructure do we have in the city?
Approximately 853 miles.
Okay. And on page 14 of the Prop 218 notice, there's an interesting stat line in there. In 2023, Corona used 9.1 billion gallons of drinking water. Corona provided 45.8% through groundwater wells, and 49.7% comes from the Lake Matthews area, and 4.5 comes from state water aqueducts. One of the things that, that I've learned over the last four years that is very impressive is our ability to blend water. And that's essentially taking the water, I'm going to use very lay terms, so please forgive me, it's essentially taking the water that we get from the ground and, that we own, and blending it with the water that we have to buy, and then is able to be used for our customers. And what does it look like for, for municipalities that don't have the ability to blend water? Because I know that we're unique in that sense, there's not very many municipalities that have that ability. What, what do their rates look like in comparison when they're 100% dependent on purchasing water?
Expensive.
Right. And is it more expensive than, than a municipality that has the ability to blend roughly 50% of their own water, or produce 50% of their own water?
Yes.
Okay. The other, the other big point that a lot of residents made that we heard was, you know, it seems like we have these capital improvement projects that never, that we, that are on the books, that never sometimes get, get done. And I remember, I think it was, I don't know, four or five months ago, we were having a discussion about this, and a week or two prior, right on Main and Harrison, I want to say, there was a, a break over by the CCC, half, Harrison? Yeah. Half the, half the street was shut down, and there was water bubbling underneath the asphalt, and kind of where the asphalt meets the curbing. And, you know, the street was flooded, and, and, you know, almost jokingly, I said, you know, we, we can't plan for breaks. Breaks happen with infrastructure, with 800 miles of infrastructure that is past its useful life, and, and, you know, that's a big challenge for us, is because when we have a break, we have to get it repaired. We can't foresee these breaks coming, so we can't really plan for them. And when you have $10 million set aside for a capital improvement project, and then you have a break that we weren't anticipating, that takes up seven or eight million dollars to repair, that's a challenge, and that's why I said we should fully fund it and just get it all done. And I understand that part of the recommendation is that we're going to be setting, setting aside money to, to hopefully get ahead of some of these challenges that we have, where infrastructure that is 50, 60, 70, 80 years old is being replaced on a schedule before it breaks. And that's kind of a challenge with our aging infrastructure, is that it breaks unintended and unknown about. And so one of the things that, that I'm really keen on is making sure that with the capital improvement projects that we have, that we're, that we're doing our best to get ahead of them. And I think that's part of the plan that we have, is to, is to kind of get ahead of some of these things before these unplanned breaks happen, and we're paying millions of dollars for capital improvement projects to make a repair. Do I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Wesley?
I have no other questions, just comments.
Okay, Jim? Let me, let me do this with Sylvia, read this thing, and then we'll move on into comments. Ms. Edwards says, the city's, city clerk's office received correspondence regarding this item?
Mayor, yes, we received 259 protest letters opposing the proposed water and sewer rate adjustments. A majority protest exists if at least 20,596 written protests are submitted for the water rate increase, and at least 18,666 written protests are submitted for the sewer rate. A majority protest does not exist.
Okay, and with that, the public hearing is now closed. Let's move on to questions from the colleagues. Tony, do you want to go first?
No, Ms. Mayor, I just want to acknowledge that I, that I appreciate everybody coming out and speaking about this topic, and, and it doesn't go unnoticed, it doesn't go unheard, and we are all very sensitive that, you know, this could impact some people financially. And I think that, you know, Mr. Moody has answered a lot of those questions, that there are options for you. And, but it is important to me to, to recognize it, acknowledge it, and to thank you for coming out.
Wesley?
Thank you. Yeah, I echo, thank you for coming, I really do, we appreciate when people come, even if you're, you're, you know, telling us we're wrong or we're making mistakes. I appreciate all of it. And I can tell you, when, you know, Councilmember Steiner and, and Councilmember Casillas and I were sitting up here in, in 2018 or 2019, when we heard that they hadn't adjusted rates for almost, what, 12 years, 13 years? Something ridiculous. And we were having to vote on implementing a 25% increase over five years, and it was horrifying. And probably one of the toughest votes that we made when we first, first sat in this chair, I think it was Mr. Ellis's first meeting, he got to sit through that. And then equally, when we saw the proposed rates under, you know, the suggested, you know, the staff-supported, we all just said, no way. Absolutely no way. Have to go back, have to try and find a different way to do this. You know, go look at every project that we have, go look at, at, you know, every opportunity that we have. And when there's only so much that's in our control, either quality suffers, which we, Mr. Moody will not do, and we, and if we do, we basically wouldn't be able to develop, to deliver water. So it, it's a, it's a horrible position to be in, and I can guarantee that, that, you know, we tried to do that with the 5% a year, to put money into our reserves, to ensure that we would, would have this issue, but no one saw the fact that every single material, every single thing that we have to use would go up almost 60%. And it's, it's, it's horrifying in every way, shape, or form. So again, I, I can tell you that, you know, the, the five of us are, you know, all live here in Corona, are all going to be paying the same rate, all going to be paying the same things. Well, well, ma'am, we, we make $800 a month. Anyway, so I'm just saying, is it, is it, is that we are, we are voting, ma'am, we are voting on, so we are voting, we are voting on this as, as residents, the same as you? That we are, the, the amount that we pay is the same amount that you pay? And, and so I, I just, you know, there's not much else to, I can say, except for thank you and, and pass on to my, my colleagues.
Guys, guys, we, we had public comments, we respected you. It, it works two ways here. Thank you.
I also wanted to express my, my sincere thanks for you coming down, for you sitting through a long meeting, a lot of comments, for you coming up to the mic. It's not easy to speak publicly, to speak publicly at a public meeting, to have your comments recorded. None of that is easy. I remember the first time I did it, I, my voice cracked multiple times, it was, it's not easy. As your council, you know, we are, we are neighbors, you know, when, when we're talking about these things, we're not talking about them in a vacuum, we're talking about these things impacting all of us. And I take my responsibility as your neighbor, as a council member, very seriously. So much so that we sit here and read and study and deliberate and ask questions and push back every chance we get. You've seen some of that tonight, and if you go back, you'll be able to see that every many, every meeting that we've discussed this water rate, there's been the same amount of critical thinking and, and desire to find solutions and creative solutions as many as possible. You know, I think about Southern California Edison, you know, a publicly traded company that provides utility that doesn't have to go to residents to vote on or be transparent about how much profit they can make. I think about, you know, water districts that pass along increases on property taxes, which, you know, folks may not even notice at the bottom of the line items of their, of their property tax bills. And the fact that legally, as a city, providing these services, it's becoming increasingly more difficult to do so, but yet you find a team that is trying to find ways to blend water, to reclaim water, to find, advocate at the state level, at the local level, to find grants, to find all of these ways to try and ease the burden for us collectively. And I'll tell you, the maths not mathing is absolutely right. As part of the generation that is, for the first time in recent history, in a worse financial situation than my parents' generation, with an advanced college degree and all the nine, with two jobs, I can tell you the maths not mathing, and that's absolutely true. That's true all the way around. And it's very frustrating. It's very frustrating. But one thing that we cannot do is be negligent in the reality that we have to have clean water. There's a reason why people know the city of Flint, Michigan. Why do you know it? And I'm certainly not okay with Corona being Flint, Michigan. That's it for me, Mayor.
Jim?
Nope.
Okay. I, it's, it's no secret, I'm a nerd, and before I decided to ever run for office, I sat down there for 10 years for every council meeting and just geeked out on them. But I watched votes like this come, and I watched citizens get up and speak their mind, and there's a guy here that said, the vote's already done, right? Because you feel like it? And you, I, I look at these ready-to-serve charges, and I just bought another house, and I don't even have it rented out, it's sitting empty, so I'm paying a ready-to-serve charge every month for not even using any water. And so I, I get the frustration, and the frustration is real, and the gentleman that got up and talked about a 60% increase over five years, it's an alarming number. And, and I think the citizens have every right to be mad and frustrated and to come here. And I think for every one of you that's here, there's probably a thousand that should be here as well. So thank you for coming, and I think you do represent those thousands. With that, there's realities. There's a, you can't let your water system go. It, it's not good to have a house if you have no water, if you have no shower, if you have no toilets, if you have no sinks. Water is your precious commodity, and it's our job, the five of us in the city, to protect that system. And that's why this is all done openly. I don't enjoy it, I don't think any of you enjoy it, but it's our job to protect that system and provide that system. And if you think about it, it's sacred. It's, you try to go two, three days without water, and you'll pay whatever it takes to get the water back on. Our city needs to protect that system, and so those are my closing comments as well. With that, Sylvia, I do have a question. Does the, does the motion need to be read twice for each item, or is it just once?
It just needs to be read once, and it's, the only motion that needs to be read is the ordinance portion. the ordinance portion of it.
Okay. With that in mind, does anybody want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll read it. Introduced by title only and waive full reading of ordinance number 3405, first reading of an ordinance modifying the budget-based water rate structure and establishing rates for potable water, reclaimed water, and sewer service fees and charges.
Okay, with that, vote your conscience. I was shocked. Okay. We're going to move to item number 10, Administrative Reports, 10.1, request from Councilmember Steiner for our-
Sorry, we still have item 9.2, it's a public hearing.
I thought we hit that one. Okay. We're going to go to 9.2, Public Hearing for Consideration of a Resolution Amending the Schedule of User Service Fees for the Provision of Electric Energy to Update Rates and Tariffs and to Make Related Adjustments to the Electric Energy Rules and Regulations.
So moved.
Okay, is, are there any public comments?
There's no public comments.
Okay, with that, public hearing is now closed. Wes has moved, Jackie second, and you can vote your vote. Sylvia, Administrative Reports sound good to you? All right. This portion of the agenda is for council discussion and action on staff reports and new topics that may not be routine status reports or documents covering previous city council action. 10.1, Request from Councilmember Steiner for Arterial Street Median Enhancements. Is Keegan, Keegan is here. Keegan, welcome. The illustrious CIP Supervisor, Keegan Olds, will present this item. Good luck, Keegan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. As stated, I am Keegan Olds, CIP Supervisor for our Streets and Stormwater section of the Public Works Engineering Section. I'm here tonight to present a, on the request from Councilmember Steiner for Arterial Street Median Enhancements. And so what I'll do is just briefly provide a quick overview of our current efforts. Currently, as part of design and planning for both currently programmed and potential future CIP projects, we are looking at installing 5.3 approximately miles of landscaped medians. That includes efforts currently programmed on Sixth Street as part of the downtown revitalization, Ontario at Lincoln, and the Magnolia Avenue project east of I-15. And in the early planning stages, we're also looking, as per the request, at Green River Road, Hidden Valley Parkway, and Promenade Avenue for potential projects and future CIP. There's no current program to install landscaped medians as part of a specific effort, and generally, we include these as items in larger projects. But if desired, I would be happy to investigate and prepare a presentation on potential plans, future efforts, to, as maybe a program to install landscaped medians as a program or a series of projects on Arterial Streets. As part of this administrative report, I have also listed some potential benefits, as well as potential challenges for installing landscaped medians on our Arterial Streets. But again, just want to iterate that in the current design and planning stages, we're looking at about 5.3 miles of landscaped medians. So if you would like me to bring it back as a future agenda item or a presentation, whether part of a city council meeting or study session, I would be happy to do so, and would like to open up to questions.
Mayor, if I could? So I wanted to give a little background on how this ended up before us. I had a Sierra De Loro resident reach out to me, and she said, hey, you know, Foothill is so beautiful when you drive down, you know, from the 15, you got this beautiful center median, it just kind of makes everything pop, and then when you get up to Sierra De Loro, there's nothing. So I'm like, man, I didn't even think of that. So I went and drove it, and she was right, when it does look great along Foothill and the center median, and then as soon as I got to Proudview Elementary, it basically turned into a concrete jungle from the school all the way to the 91 freeway. And as I was looking at the center medians, there's a huge portion of it that wouldn't require any turn lanes, it serves no purpose other than looking ugly. And so I thought, man, we could really make this area look so much more beautiful, along with the benefits of traffic calming on some of our major arterials. But then I started really paying attention to it, and just driving down Lincoln, and I'm like, gosh, this is boring too, you could, you could make this area look so much more of a community feel. And I just started noticing it all, you know, all throughout the city, how nice that would look. Now, I realize that our priority right now is downtown, but that doesn't mean we can't plan for something for the future, maybe chip away at it, one or two medians a year, one every two, whatever, whatever we can do. But I also was curious on, would that come out of LMDs? The money, would it come out of general fund? It's something we, you know, we can explore. Can you do a balance of each? So anyways, I just thought it was worthy enough to talk about, to help beautify our city, and again, it doesn't have to be a day-one priority, but I think we should look at it for the future without a doubt. So thank you, Keegan.
I admire your moxie on this one, Jim. I, I don't disagree, I think it would help to beautify the city. Doing some quick calculations in my head, I don't know when there would be budget, budget for an undertaking of something like that, even for smaller amounts. I would say that that's something, and this is going to sound not great, but that's something that the future city council could probably consider, in my opinion, I just don't see it in the next four years.
And I realize, again, it's not a priority, but if we don't plan for something, even for a future city council, then the ball's never going to get rolling. So I think there's some things we can do.
I guess I would just be a little concerned about the cost of planning.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's what I'd like to kind of explore. That's why it's just a future agenda item, so we can talk about it.
If they want, if they wanted to come back and, and tell us what the, what the cost of something like that would be, I guess that would be okay, I just don't want, I just don't want staff to spend a whole bunch of time on something that I just don't think is possible within the next four years.
And I think on the staff time, or on the staff report, it did address the cost of staff time to put together a plan, and I don't recall that being significant.
Yes, I believe it states 40 hours of staff time. I actually did start working on a presentation already, so the impact to me personally-
Oh, boy.
-would be, would be a little less, but it would require some investigation on potential funding sources, since those can vary, as you mentioned, LMDs, potential traffic safety improvement programs, that sort of thing, but as well as examining the financial cost, especially in regards to currently projects that are in design and what we're already looking at.
And grants may be available for something like that.
Potentially.
Yeah.
I think Keegan Railroad did their diddario.
I didn't know he was an overachiever like that.
Wesley?
Yeah, I like the idea. I'm a big fan of planting, you know, a flag in the ground and trying to make something happen. I guess it's, you know, me being my Don Quixote, or, you know, want to tilt at the windmill, but I guess I got lucky with, you know, they said you could never get an improvement on the freeway either, and we did that in three years. So I'm happy to see this go forward, at least to get together a plan. I do think there's going to be some, there'll be some grant money, because there are, I forgot the term, it's something about the rate of solar insulation versus concrete, and anyway, there's, there's some grant money for that, and, but I would like to find ways for us to prioritize, and it being, you know, Sixth Street corridor would be really important to me. I think that we have some safety concerns in District One on Hidden Valley that I would really love to see those prefer, you know, preferably kind of go first, because they have had some, some issues there, and, you know, if we're going to be looking at these areas and maybe a ranking system that would look at, you know, maybe safety first. In fact, I think there are some, some CalSta money that they're putting forward for, for safety projects, so there might be an opportunity for us there to build some pieces in, and if we can find other places that we can, you know, tweak that, it might be a way to make it happen a little bit faster, so.
I think this is for sure an other people's money thing.
Yeah, I love other people's money, it's my favorite kind of money. Yeah, that's it, thank you so much. So yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor of coming back and, and let's talk about it more, and again, you know, putting a flag in the ground's a good thing.
Jackie, do you want to follow Don Quixote over there?
No, I don't, but I, Mr. Olds, thank you so much. I think one of the things that I liked about this idea was sometimes we go in there and we're already making improvements on the street, or we're, and so it feels like if we knew, or if we, like hindsight's always perfect vision, right? But one of the things coming into this council that we learned right away is that when you don't have this exploration, if you do have the opportunity come before you and you've never thought about it before, you're going to be functioning from a deficit of knowledge, and you're probably going to, you know, severely undermine, like, how much it'll take to get something done, and could undercut yourself. So you just never know when there might be an opportunity for more funding, or if we're already addressing something in the area, and we can say, hey, actually, we identified this as a possible street for median beautification, and aha, here's the perfect moment. So I like it as a plan that sits there, ready for us to chip away at it, and so I, as an aspirational plan, exactly. So I look forward to seeing what you come up with, and you finish your presentation. Thank you.
Well, when I'm fighting with my wife, she says I serve no other purpose than to look ugly, so that, that rang home with me. I, I'm with you, Jim, and it looks like Keegan already is going to do it anyways, can do what he wants anyways. So I think we're good. With that, do we need, we need a public comments on this, right? So let's open it up to public comments. Did you want to speak? Come on up. No, you're good to go.
Just want to comment on the, you know, landscaping things, because who's going to pay the water bill for those plants that are going to go in down there? Is that a cheap shot? Because it's going to be a lot more expensive by the time we get to doing it, so that'd be a concern. Thank you.
All right, I didn't think it was a cheap shot. Thank you for speaking. Sylvia, are there any other speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay, with that, public comments is closed. Is there, Jim, do you want to make the motion?
Sure.
Oh, no motion needed. Thank you, Wes. Moving along, 10.2, Travel Advance Request for Councilmember Jackie Casillas. Does any member want a staff report on this item?
I mean, I could provide some comments, if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm at it.
This is the one up north, yep. This conference, it's a League Leaders. As you know, I'm Riverside County incoming, or I just, actually, the last meeting, same day as our city council meeting, I was presented, I was sworn in as the president of Riverside County Division. So at this-
Of the League of Cities.
Of the League of Cities, yes, of Riverside Division, just our county, not the statewide organization. But this is an organization that advocates and lobbies for local control and for essentially lobbying for cities when Sacramento lawmakers are getting together and passing laws that affect us. So I want to assure you all that I'm going to be coming, I'm going to be attending this meeting with our legislative platform, and I'm doing everything in my power to make our platform be the League Cities platform. So, you know, trust me that I, I'm not going to be shy, so.
I trust you. Any comments from anyone else? Jim, Wes, me? Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this agenda item.
No cheap shots over there?
So moved.
All right. Fair enough. With that, second vote, and off Jackie goes. 10.3, Vice Mayor Steiner's Request for City Council's Consideration to Adopt a Homeowner's Insurance Protection Resolution. Amina, Amina Mears, the Assistant to the City Manager, uh-oh, my bad, Dr. Amina Mears, Assistant to the City Manager, she will present this item.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So staff received the agenda item request from Vice Mayor Steiner for the city to consider, for city council to consider adopting a resolution advocating for home insurance protections for Corona residents. The city has received comments from residents regarding insurance plans being either canceled or premiums increased due to fires and other natural disasters. Recently, the counties of San Bernardino and Placer have adopted resolutions urging the state insurance commissioner Lara and the governor to declare a state of emergency and to act swiftly to restore stability to the insurance market. A resolution of this nature is in alignment with the city's legislative platform, as we just recently added language expressing the city's advocacy and support for addressing insurance increases in rates, insurance rates increases and cancellations due to natural disasters. So without further ado, I will now turn this discussion over to Vice Mayor.
Yeah, and I'm not sure there's a whole lot to add to what Dr. Mears said, you know, we've all gotten the emails from our residents concerned that they can't get homeowners' insurance, or they're threatening to, to have it taken away from them, and just the cost, you know, to find insurance. And I know our fire department's doing a lot with, with trying to get communities fire-wise and fire-safe and, and getting HOAs involved to understand, you know, defensible space and things like that, but, you know, it's, it's really ridiculous, you know, because it's in high fire hazard areas, which I understand, and I understand that measures need to be taken, but so many of the homes in high, in high fire hazard areas are not going to catch fire from a, from a forest fire, so it's, it's an overreach on what is identified as high fire hazard. But I know there's not a lot we can do about this, but I still think we need to make a strong stance, and I like what San Bernardino County and Placer County did with demanding that the governor make this a state of emergency and step in and get this taken care of.
Okay, I'm with you. Guys want to do public comments, or do you want to, public comments? Sylvia, are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this agenda item.
Okay, with that, public comments is closed. Tony?
No, no comments.
No? Wes?
I agree, my 300% increase in the last four years, so anything they can do, and I know that, you know, again, tilton and windmills, but enough people, you know, write this letter, then, I know that the insurance commissioner is trying to work on it, but yeah, you're right, that, that absolutely needs to happen. That high fire danger designation is far too broad.
Jackie?
I just want to add that, you know, we have a very active fire chief who is, like, sitting at all these tables and advocating and pushing every chance we get to, to just lower the cost for residents, to show that we're being proactive. I mean, we created these Fire Safe Councils, it's a nonprofit, it's trying to make a difference, and we're just, we're trying to save people money wherever we possibly can, so yeah, I'm in favor of, of this advocacy as well.
I am as well, and the fact that you heard that it came from Placer and San Bernardino means people are talking about it, and if we can join the, those ranks, there's value in that, and so I'm a yes too. I don't think we're voting on it, and I think we're good. Are you happy with that?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. 10.4, Request from Councilmember Speak for the City Council to Consider an Ordinance Preventing Unsolicited Advertising or of Printed Materials on Private Property. Oh, once again, Dr. Amina Mears, the great assistant to the city manager, will present this item.
Mayor Amina's fine. So staff received another agenda item, the- Mayor Amina Spine. So staff received another agenda item. This one is from councilmember speak, wanting us to look into drafting an ordinance prohibiting solicited advertising circulars or other printed material on printed property except for porches. Now, the city has an existing code, CMC 5.20.040, that regulates the distribution of handbills in the city. The ordinance does not explicitly prohibit the distribution of handbills on private properties, however, it does note that residents or persons who do not want to receive handbills can request so by displaying a visible no solicitation sign or anything that has similar language. So staff, tonight, we would like further direction on the next steps, specifically if the council wants staff to develop an ordinance, or if you want us to amplify the current ordinance that we have through maybe some marketing, social media campaign push to make residents further aware, or whatever else you might have in mind. So I will now defer to you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I, I, this is one of those things where, you know, I'm walking, I get out my, my front yard, and there's this, the bag of garbage paper that is in my, in my gutter that I'm having to pick out and put in the trash, and, and I'm making sure that it's not, you know, it's getting run over 15 times, and the person next door, their stuff washes down, and to me, it's, it's litter, you know, and, and there's, my neighbors have no soliciting signs, and they get thrown out onto their driveways, just like everything else. And I think it's just, uh, it's a, it's litter, and frankly, it's wrong, and I think that it's impacting our water quality. You have these things in the, in the gutter in different parts of the city that just sit there, and I, I'd like to see a stronger stance. I know we have something, I, I did read that article, or that ordinance, and there isn't a T to it. I'm okay with taking our existing ordinance and tweaking it a little bit. I think the, the issue will be enforcement, nor do I want the, I'm not saying I want the city to go around and, and find people that, that are doing this, but I think if there's someone that says, hey, I don't want this, and, you know, the, the folks that are doing this would know, hey, don't do this, because you're going to get, you know, fined by the city of Corona. And so I, I, I think this is something that, that, you know, I talked to, to my neighbors and folks who live in different parts of the city and said the same thing. This, they hate it. They, they can't stand it. It's just one more piece of garbage they have to pick up and throw away. That's it. Thank you.
Jackie?
Sure. Um, no, look, it's annoying. I agree. It just feels like fighting and losing battle, and I think that, like, I just, I think about the enforcement. I don't know how this is enforceable. There's so many things that are deemed, like, like, not, so, what's it called, solicitation, and, and I, and I think it's, it's a pretty, like, porous line, you know what I mean? Like, for instance, we just had an election, and all of those papers are not considered solicitation.
Yeah, I, and, and I specified that in the request, that, that if it was on a porch, totally okay. If someone wants to get out of their car, wants to walk up and put something on your porch, totally fine with that. The person that comes by and, and throws the bag of rocks with, you know, with an advertisement in it.
At like 3:00 in the morning?
Yes. Or the, the little newspaper that gets tossed out of the, you know, that, that's just some advertisement that frankly gets run over and ends up in the trash anyway. And, and so I, I don't want to infringe on the fact that, you know, if someone wants to actually get out of their car and, and walk and put something on your, on your door, on your, your porch, that's totally okay.
Yeah. Yeah, this just seems like, again, like one of those things, it's like, like a, fighting a, a losing battle, but I, you know, I'd, I'd want to, you know, I'd be open to seeing like what a modification of
Sure.
what we already have might look like. I just, it is that piece of enforcement that I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think if people could, you know, I wouldn't necessarily put it on the city to go out and hunt these, hunt folks down, but if they, if you had an issue and said, hey, don't, don't deliver us anymore, we would let, I mean, I think there's only a few people that do this, and if you told them, hey, by the way, this is not, you know, this is against the, against our, our code, it would be a, a pretty short list of folks to send to. And then if you had people like me that cared about it, then you would
Like a standard letter the city has.
You'd be self-reporting, and then, and then that way, you know, it'd be taken care of. But like I said, looking forward to there being an option to take a look at it.
T-Dog, you good?
Yeah, I, I'm in support of this. I too don't like the bag of rocks that I find on my driveway. I really appreciate, oddly enough, I really appreciate the notepads that the realtors leave. I use those all the time. But I, more, more times than not, I find them, I find that bag of papers in the gutter that's usually soaked by the time that I have to get it, and then pick up a bag of wet nasty paper and throw it in the trash. So if we could somehow send a letter to them, because we've got an ordinance that we can point to, and that helps mitigate it, I'm, I'm all for it.
Jim? I read an article that, uh, back in the day, Steve McQueen and James Garner were neighbors, and Steve McQueen would drive by James' house and throw his beer cans in his yard. So kind of reminds me of that.
It's 10 o'clock, you know that.
Oh, well, these are good 10 o'clock stories. So I think we're good there with that. Um, no vote? Does anyone know the time?
No, but I have a story about Paul Newman, if you'd like to hear it.
Okay, legislative matters. There are none. Reports from board members and commissions? There are none from library, none from planning and housing. Receive and file a bunch of things. Regional meeting. Wes, it's 10 o'clock, but there's an update from you on the Southern California Association of Government Transportation.
I'll just say that the five pages that I was going to read, I'll just sum it up real quick with, the state continued to hate you and your car, and that will continue. SCAG is giving money to the city of Moreno Valley for a horrible project called the World Logistics Center to put in a interchange improvement. We're a project that never should have been approved, and a really great project in the city of Beaumont to put in a grade separation. And that's pretty much it, yeah, except for, you know, the hate of cars and people.
Okay. Part two, update from councilmember Wes Speak on the Riverside County Transportation Commission, RTTC, meeting of November 13th, 2024.
Again, more hating of people in their cars. There was a legislative update, we did a couple of votes, but I'm not going to talk about them, but the, the biggest thing was a legislative update from our, the folks at RTTC about Calsta, and their update of the California transportation planning, basically cap ties what the initials are, and I always forget what it's, what it stands for. But basically, it's a, this is the final nail. I think I talked to you guys about it last time. I will post the letter. The city is going to be, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for signing that letter, opposing these changes, and the most disgusting part of it is that the SB 1 money that we've been paying, the additional tax that we've been paying on the gas tax that they said would only go toward transportation, one of the changes that they're proposing in this is to redirect that money to housing. And, and it's, it's a lie, and it's a, a flat lie of, that was voted in, and I'm hoping that there are folks that speak out against it. I will put something out on my page, and then hopefully the city, when we finish our letter, we are using, uh, RTTC is getting letters together from different cities to oppose that, and that would go so far as to actually restrict the money that RTTC gets from Measure A, and, and maintain, or ma, make that, that, those improvements not happen on the road. They can, there will not be any more lanes over a mile. They're going to start looking at ulterials to limit the, the VMT, the vehicle miles traveled accessed on those roads, and it's going to get, it's going to get really bad. So hopefully enough people are, are going to notice this time with this, this final nail in the coffin for folks getting in their cars, and not, not that I'm opposed to public transportation, but we just don't have any. Won't have it here for probably 30 years. To, to continue to, to slam that point home is, is just, just horrible. And that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Wes. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public for the regional meetings?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
All right, Steiner's appreciative of that. Okay, city attorneys, reports and comments. Dean, you want to get into that Paul Newman story now? Okay. Uh, Mr. Ellis, I see you're back from vacation. The Orient, how'd it go?
Uh, no comments, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Uh, city councilmember reports. Oh, we got to do something here. Designate, designate representative to participate on ad hoc committee for field rates. Does anybody? Tony? All right, Tony. Tony. Jacob, do we need one or two people for the ad hoc?
Just one.
There you have it. So let the record state that councilmember DaDario has gladly volunteered. Volunteled. And with that, does anybody have any comments? Tony?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. On November 9th, I was able to attend the Veterans Event at the Riverside National Cemetery. I was there with Vulcan Materials, and they were placing flags on all of the cemetery. They were, they were one of many, many organizations placing flags on the cemetery out there. It's very, uh, it was, it was great to see everybody placing the flags and all the flags flying and the events that they had going on. My grandparents are both at National Cemetery, so it was very special for me. By the time I got over there to pay my respects, their flags were already there, and they were perfectly straight, so it was, it was a beautiful thing to see. And I also wanted to give a quick shout out to our communications team and our digital team. They did a great job on the state of the city. The video was great. I believe it's available now on all of the city's socials. It's a great video. Some great acting by the mayor. I think if there's a category for state of the city addresses at the Grammy or the Oscars, I think you should probably be up for one. But, you know, there was, it was, it was a, pretty much a packed house, and, and afterwards, I was walking back to my vehicle, and, and I was talking with, with a couple that own a business here in town, and it's called DBZ Records and Books, or Books and Records. And it's a, it's a great little store on Sixth Street. It's owned by Dilver and Karen Lizama. They've been open for three or four years, and, and I went and I visited the bookstore and, and bought a couple of things that they had there. It's a really cool story of, of local folks that have, entrepreneurs that have decided to take their love of, of books and records and, and open a store here in Corona. And, you know, just following their social media and just learning more about their story, they're kind of a big deal as far as an independent book and record store, or independent bookstore and independent record store. The day that I ended up going, they were having a independent record release for the new Gwen Stefani record, and it was just really cool. There was, when I showed up at a little bit before 5:00, there was a line of people out the door waiting to get in, to buy this record, and I thought that that was really cool. And just really something, you know, people talk about wanting something different here in the city of Corona, and, you know, they talk about arts and culture, and, and boy, this store really hits on all of that. They've got a bunch of open, open mic nights and record release, album parties, and all kinds of cool things that they've got going on. And so I wanted to give them a shout out. I thought that they have a really cool niche they're filling, and if you are watching this and you get an opportunity to go check them out, go check them out. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Uh, yeah, I can't wait. I, I got your little note about how awesome it was. I'm looking forward to going down, especially something on Sixth Street, which always, always makes me happy. I, just a couple of things. One, we're getting into the season, so both Dos Lagos and the Crossings will be having their holiday lighting event on the same day. But we're trying to figure out which one we're going to go to, but both seem to be, you know, kind of going big and trying to get people to come back. And again, I, I want to echo what Councilwoman DaDario said, that, you know, Sean, the, you and your team did an amazing job. It's the best state of the city video that you guys have done yet. And I, I, I can't wait to see what you guys do next year. It's getting better and better every single time, so thank you, and please pass it on to your, to your team. And good job, Mr. Mayor, you were, uh,
Yeah.
Yeah, I was expec, I did see you filming some things, and I was very bummed I didn't see you on Third Street. I didn't see you, but, but it was a nice job.
Thank, thank you. Jackie, you got anything? Jim?
Just one thing as an FYI. You guys know I sit on the, I represent the city on the Santa Ana River Advisory Group, so tomorrow, the Coastal Commission, California Coastal Commission is having their public meeting in Oakland, and I've already registered to make some public comments, but Agenda Item 8, which is actually about probably five or six hours into the meeting, is near the end. It's, they're considering allocating $9.2 million for the 1.7 mile link of the Green River, uh, Santa Ana River Trail for that connection. So, um,
Good.
I, I feel good about it, you guys. So we're finally getting these connections connected, and this'll, this'll go a long way in making that happen. So I'll, I'll report back next.
So is that like $500,000 an hour for you to sit in there?
Well, you know, they're going over waterways and stuff, so that's why it's so expensive.
No, it's good stuff.
Thanks for keeping your eye on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Sean, you guys, you and your team knocked it out with the state of the city, and Donna and her team, you guys were phenomenal. So the only heckler was my eight-year-old daughter there, and she let me have it. But it was a great night and a lot of fun, and maybe one day Sean will release the stuff he didn't put in the video. So with that, the next meeting of the council is December 4th, 2024, and this meeting is adjourned.